Good evening. So I hereby call the Palm Springs Regular City Council Meeting of February 27, 2022 to order. For those who would like to join me, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Present.
Counselor Middleton.
Present.
Counselor Woods.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Holstich.
Here.
Mayor Coors.
Here.
All councils present.
Thank you. Our next item is acceptance of the agenda. The City Council will discuss. The order of the agenda may amend the order, add urgency items. Note abstentions or no votes on consent calendar items or requests consent calendar items be removed for separate discussion. I would like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda, but before I do so, I have to go get my book. So I'll be right back. (laughter) All right. Presentations first. But actually, before that, we have some presentations. So the first one is a proclamation. And if the whole council wants to go down, and Mayor Joe Ginther, if you'd like to join us. Well, it's very special when you get to do this for someone you've gotten to work with and so respect and admire. So it's really an honor to present this to you. So whereas Mary Jo Ginther began her career as a director of the Palm Springs Bureau of Tourism in October 2006, and whereas Mary Jo helped build the Palm Springs brand to a world-class resort, implementing the incredibly successful tagline, "Like No Place Else", and well-positioned the city as a leading international visitor destination. And whereas Mary Jo saw the city's TOT tax increase from $14.5 million in 2006 to over $33 million in 2019, more than double over her 14-year tenure. And whereas Mary Jo was a leader in the community, having served on a number of boards, including Cow Travel, Palm Springs Women in Film and Television...
Good evening. So I hereby call the Palm Springs Regular City Council Meeting of February 27, 2022, to order. For those who would like to join me, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Garner.
Present.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Councilmember Woods.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Holstich.
Here.
Mayor Coors.
Here.
All councils present.
Thank you. Our next item is acceptance of the agenda. The City Council will discuss the order of the agenda, may amend the order, add urgency items, note abstentions or no votes on consent calendar items, or request consent calendar items be removed for separate discussion. I would like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda, but before I do so, I have to go get my book. So I'll be right back. (laughter) All right. Presentations first. But actually, before that, we have some presentations. So the first one is a proclamation. And if the whole council wants to go down, and Mayor Joe Ginther, if you'd like to join us. Well, it's very special when you get to do this for someone you've gotten to work with and so respect and admire, so it's really an honor to present this to you. So whereas Mary Jo Ginther began her career as the Director of the Palm Springs Bureau of Tourism in October 2006, and whereas Mary Jo helped build the Palm Springs brand to a world-class resort, implementing the incredibly successful tagline, "Like No Place Else", and well-positioned the city as a leading international visitor destination, and whereas Mary Jo saw the city's TOT tax increase from $14.5 million in 2006 to over $33 million in 2019, more than double over her 14-year tenure, and whereas Mary Jo was a leader in the community, having secured, served on a number of boards, including Cow Travel, Palm Springs Women in Film and Television, PS Modcom, and President of the Palm Springs Hospitality Association, and whereas Mary Jo changed the website from palmsprings.org to visit palmsprings.com, that was terrible, and it was palm-springs.org, really, then added, "Visit Gay Palm Springs dot com", building new websites and creating a diverse destination identity, and whereas Mary Jo oversaw the successful operation of the iconic Visitor Information Center on Tranway Road, and helped open the Wellwood Memorial Library as a second visitor center in 2015, and whereas Mary Jo launched many successful campaigns targeted to key potential visitors in the local drive and fly markets, most recently launching the uniquely Palm Springs campaign to support local businesses, in coordination with Mayor Jeff Coors, I know him, and whereas Mary Jo has played a huge role in marketing and promoting the renaissance of Palm Springs destination, from a once sleepy village to an ultra-cool resort destination that visitors from around the world flock to for year-round sunshine, a relaxed desert lifestyle and mid-century modern architecture like no place else, and whereas Mary Jo is much loved by our community and stakeholders, offering support with an incredible positive attitude and a talent for keeping everyone smiling, she'll be greatly missed by our tourism and hospitality community and everyone at City Hall, and whereas Mary Jo could talk to you about anything over a glass or two of wine, we toast her as she begins her new travel adventures. Now therefore, we, the City Council of Palm Springs, California, by the power vested in us, do hereby pay special tribute to Mary Jo Ginther. (applause)
Well, first of all, thank you to the City Council, thank you past councils. You know, the city and all the tourism businesses put really an incredible amount of money, time, and effort into rebuilding the city's reputation, and, you know, we all remember that, and I'm just very proud of being part of a very large team that helped Palm Springs get its groove back. So I just would, again, city staff, it's been a pleasure working with you. I don't know what to say. We have worked together for 20 years, side by side, and I don't know how many council presentations, but it's always five slides, Mary Jo, five slides, that's all you get. But I can't begin to tell you how much I appreciate your support, so thank you. My convention colleagues out there, my cousins who work just as hard to sell and bring conventions to Palm Springs as we do to bring leisure visitors, thank you, it's been so much fun working alongside of you. Rob, welcome once again, and then to the A-Team, Randy, John Michael, Cara, Ken, Rick, Kathy, you guys are awesome, so thank you all.
Traffic Relief Plan, and Ann Mayer, the Executive Director, will be doing the presentation, so welcome.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Could I have the, thank you. Thank you very much, I'm a little worried I have more than five slides, David, so I, there's only eight, so I'll go quickly. Thank you very much, (laughter) thank you, really appreciate the opportunity to join you here this evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Again, I'm Ann Mayer, the Executive Director of the Riverside County Transportation Commission, and for those of you who may be saying, who and what are the Riverside County Transportation Commission? We are the county's transportation planning agency, as well as in charge of administering the county's half-cent sales tax amongst many other responsibilities related to the funding and development of transportation projects and program. Palm Springs is very capably represented on RCTC by Councilmember Middleton, so we thank her for her hard work at our commission and throughout the state on transportation issues. So I mentioned the half-cent sales tax in Riverside County, and what that means is we are a self-help county. We are one of 25 counties throughout the state of California where voters have voted to impose a sales tax on themselves to fund transportation projects and programs, and I know that I am not telling those of you in Palm Springs anything about self-help that you don't already know with your measures J and D. Your voters have voted to tax themselves for important city projects and services, and countywide voters have done the same for transportation. So RCTC is proud, as I'm sure you all are, to be responsible stewards of these self-help, voter-approved measures. I'm here today to talk about our draft traffic relief plan, and it is all about local, it's all about regional, it's all about Riverside County, and what we can do for the future because it's possible and probable that we're going to have to help ourselves again. We have been engaging with the public and stakeholders around the county for several years, talking about transportation challenges, and those conversations have led, whoops, yikes, wrong button, have led to the traffic relief plan. Now equity and balance is an important part of any conversation in Riverside County regarding transportation and pretty much any other topic, but also it's a very important part of this plan. Palm Springs is a diverse community, and the plan reflects that diversity. There are areas of your city that rely on a reliable public transit system, there are other areas that will benefit greatly from more frequent passenger rail, and citywide tourism is essential to your economy with over $7.8 billion in this industry in the Coachella Valley. All of the Convention Bureau folks left, but tell them I gave them a shout-out as to how important they are to the economy here in the Coachella Valley and throughout the county. RCTC has a strong relationship with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and it is so important to RCTC that Scott White and I have a monthly phone call where we check in on the latest issues that are of concern to his members, as well as talking about what we're doing to further transportation out here into the Coachella Valley. So you can see on the slide here, these are the key conversation points that our commissioners have discussed. This plan is about connecting communities, improving safety, reducing traffic, focusing on travel within Riverside County, focusing on jobs, focusing on tourism, and finding the funding we need to accelerate projects so they're not delayed for decades. The other important aspect here is that we're in a position where we can no longer depend on the state or federal government to solve our funding problems for us, it's about local control and local governance. With a traffic relief plan in the Coachella Valley, in our conversations with SEVAG, and Tom Kirk, the Executive Director of SEVAG, is also here tonight, every five years they produce their TPPS, which is their prioritization system for all of the transportation projects, and that summary analyzes how much all of the projects in the valley need additional funding, and the total cost right now is about $3.5 billion. And for context, Measure A, the local half-cent sales tax, will provide the Coachella Valley with less than $200 million between now and when it sunsets in 2039. It's only about 5% of the money needed for important priorities here out in the Coachella Valley. I would also want to point out in the traffic relief plan that we look at geographic equity and balance as well. We know how important it is out here in the Coachella Valley, as well as in Palo Verde Valley, and as well as in Western Riverside County, that money raised in this area should be spent here. So when we're talking about economic equity and balance, it's about raising money in the Coachella Valley, that money stays in the Coachella Valley for Coachella Valley priorities. So this map here just shows a summary of some of the key TPPS priorities out here, and you can see, obviously, 111, as well as many of the other local roads are included. Some of the planned highlights include upgrading infrastructure to eliminate or reduce road closures. I was out here last February 14th with the storm that caused a lot of damage, but also very critically cut off access for public safety and emergency services, the flooding, in other conditions, blowing sands on roads for you, Indian Canyon, Gene Autry Drive. We know how important resolving those public safety concerns are, so you'll see in the traffic relief plan where we've got a category that addresses flooding and blowing sand. The plan also includes synchronizing traffic signals, improving Highway 111, widening I-10 east of Cook, keeping bus fares low for seniors, disadvantaged veterans, as well as students. That's, it's very important that we make sure that transportation is an option for all, and that all modes are available. This also includes rebuilding some bridges along the I-10. Now in terms of other planned highlights, Highway 86, although it's not in the city of Palm Springs, Highway 86 is very important for folks traveling in between the counties, as well as from a goods movement standpoint. The plan also includes funding to build stations to support passenger rail that we've been working on for a number of years. We know how important passenger rail is and the vision for passenger rail out here in the Coachella Valley. We are currently working on an environmental document to have Amtrak service to round-trip trains per day between Los Angeles and India. We know how important that is. It is a long haul with that process to try to get the approvals to do that, but this plan does include funding for all of the stations and bringing up stations. We know that Palm Springs has an Amtrak-ready station already here, and it will certainly be part of the conversation when we get to that point. We know, again, how important rail service is to the future of the valley. So as I mentioned, we have our traffic relief plan, it can be found at trafficreliefplan.org, the full plan is included up on that website. So far, we have received completed surveys, it's only been up for about a month and a half, completed surveys from about 2,500 people. We've received more than 5,000 comments, and will be taking comments until June 10th, and that's part of the reason why I'm here tonight, to not only share the concept of this plan with you, but also to help make sure that the word gets out to your constituents and the residents, that there's a plan available for their review and comment. I was very pleased to see a lot of orange shirts here in the audience today. Being in the construction industry, it always warms my heart to see a lot of orange shirts and orange vests, and I'd like to point out that as a part of this plan, we contracted with UCR Beacon Economics to do an economic study of what this investment would do for the Riverside economy, and just a couple of key highlights. $8.6 billion raised over 30 years countywide for this sales tax measure means $7.7 billion invested in design, engineering, and construction, which translates to $11 billion in economic output, 38,000 direct jobs, and over $3.5 billion in labor income. Those are real numbers, real economic boon for Riverside County, and something that is very important in terms of looking at our traffic relief plan, because if we're going to solve some of our congestion issues, we have to find a way to bring jobs home to Riverside County instead of having so many of our residents have to travel to neighboring counties. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, I very much appreciate the opportunity to join you here this evening. Erin Haake, our External Affairs Director, is joining me as well, we also have some fact sheets available for the public if they'd be interested in taking a look at them, and again, happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you so much. Do we have some questions? Councilmember Garner.
I just wanted to point something out really quick, when you go to the website to take the survey and read information, at the top right, there's a button that says Espanol, and so you can put it in Spanish.
Thank you for pointing that out. Thank you for pointing that out, and all of our material is bilingual, so not only is our website set up for that, all of our paper materials and collateral materials are in Spanish as well. Thank you for pointing that out.
Anyone else? Councilmember Middleton.
Okay. Ann, I want to thank you for a wonderful presentation, and remind my colleagues that in June of this year, RCTC will be asked to make a decision as to whether or not to put this measure on the ballot, and I will be coming to you as your representative sometime between now and June for authorization, vote on that, I know which way I'm leaning, but it's important that we all weigh in on this.
Great. Anyone else? Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So David, the other presentations are going to be in your City Manager Report? Okay. So now, the acceptance of the agenda. The City Council will discuss the order of the agenda, may amend the order, add urgency items, note abstentions or no votes on consent calendar items, or request consent calendar items be removed for separate discussion. I'd like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda. Are there any items any council member would like removed the consent calendar for separate discussion or vote, or any changes to the agenda? Councilmember Garner.
So it looks like we've got a lot of people here, I want to move 5A to be right after our legislative session.
Okay.
So right now, it's at the end.
And 5A is the discussion regarding community workforce agreements and labor peace agreements. Any objection? Okay, we will do that. Any consent calendar items people want removed? Just start down that end, and we'll work our way up. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Or you can hit your buttons. Oh, Lisa, hit it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull Item 1I.
Okay. Item 1I, Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull 1F as in Frank, 1N as in Nancy, and 1O as in Ogle.
Wow. Okay. Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you. I'd like to pull Item 1C for a quick staff report for the public's benefit, and 1M as in Mary.
Okay, so I have 1C, 1F, 1M, 1N, 1O, 1I. Anything else? Okay. Oh, oh, yes, thank you.
Actually, 5B, we could remove that from the agenda. Actually, SEVAG has postponed action on that item, and there's no need for council to discuss it now, and I think, Mayor, you are going to report out as the liaison to the executive.
Yeah, actually, we did take action, but not directly on that, so yes, I'll report out my council member comments, thank you for that. Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Middleton, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Holstich.
Motion passes, 5 to 0.
Great. Thank you. Can the City Attorney please report out of closed session?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, members of the public, the City Council met in closed session earlier to discuss the items that are listed on the agenda. There was no action taken that is required under the Brown Act to be reported out. However, the Council wanted the public to know that with regard to one of the items in the Council's ongoing efforts to actively monitor the various hotel projects within town, the city will be taking additional enforcement action against the Tova Hotel. The city did issue an administrative citation previously, within the recent past, and the city will be taking additional enforcement action with regard to the Tova Hotel, so we just wanted to make note of that. Nothing further.
If I can ask the City Attorney a question on that? Just since when we talked about the last time, we had issued a citation and had discussed an agreement with the timeline for that operator, can you just?
Correct.
Update the public on that?
Correct. So the city issued an administrative citation to the property owner for $1,500 under the city's vacant building ordinance. We met with the property owner approximately a month and a half ago and discussed a compliance agreement that would include milestones for bringing the hotel into full compliance by developing it out. That agreement was presented to the owner, and the owner has not responded or provided any comments on that agreement, and has essentially refused to sign that agreement, and that's why we're moving to the next enforcement action.
Okay. And those, as I recall from the vacant building ordinance, those escalate each month, the amount of those?
Yes, they'll be $3,500.
And they go up to?
$25,000.
Monthly.
After 60 days, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, appreciate that. The next item is public testimony, this time has been set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on non-public hearing agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You are asked to please begin your time by telling us You are asked to please begin your time by telling us what agenda item or items you are speaking about. Please note the testimony for public hearings, and we don't have any tonight. But normally, those are only taken at the time of the public hearing. And general public comments for subjects not on the agenda will be taken later in the evening. City clerk? Let me get back to the right panel. Okay. So we have 37 item public comments so far. If you're one of the few people who hasn't put in a card, you can do so now. If you're speaking and you're part of a group and you're okay with someone speaking for you, you can ask people to stand to show support. If there are additional points you want to add, of course, please do add them, and everyone is welcome to speak, but it will move faster if there is a group leader on specific issues. So call the first speaker, and I'll call the next two, so if people could line up on the side, that way we can move through this a little quicker. So our first speaker is Tiffany Leboe, followed by David Gray and William Christensen.
Good evening, Mayor. Can you hear me? Oh, good. Mayor, City Council, and city staff. I am Tiffany Leboe. As many of you know, I've been very vocal about the animal ordinances, or lack thereof, here in the city of Palm Springs. I have been an animal advocate here for 15 years of my 25-year residency here, and the proposal to restrict backyard breeding, I will allow as a step, but in my heart of hearts, I do believe that that is not even going to, it's going to gloss over what is really needed, which is a full backyard breeding ban in the city of Palm Springs. The way that it is worded currently, it's almost inviting people to breed once per year, and if they don't get a permit, then they'll get a citation, and so on and so forth. The people that are actually doing this don't want to be part of a law-abiding situation. They're doing it for money. They don't care about the health or welfare of the animals. They care about getting it on Craigslist and selling it when they're cute and small, and normally not after the dogs have been weaned properly from the mother. So it just brings up a whole host of issues, and the fact that there is a shelter here that takes great care of the dogs and cats that are brought in for a variety of reasons. It just makes no sense to me. I do appreciate the time and attention that you have taken with it, but I beg of you to consider going a step further when you are researching this. I know this is a first, you know, pass or whatever. So anyway, I do appreciate it. I know how busy everyone is, but when you're dealing with live beings, time really is of the essence.
Great.
Oh, well, thank you.
Well done. Thank you. Our next speaker is David Gray, followed by William Christensen, followed by Will Camparsy.
Good evening. My name is David Gray, as Mayor Coors just said, but I'm here this evening to speak to item 4A, and as a member of the Measure J Subcommittee and a former Board of Trustees member of the library. I'm just here just to thank you for moving this project along. As you know, this has been an ongoing project, and it's great that you're using Measure J funds that have been allocated in previous years to get the master plan for the park going, as well as the library building program for whether or not we will renovate, or build, or do a combination of both in the park. I guess the only thing I would ask, and I have, there are two other members of the Measure J Library Subcommittee here this evening. When you're putting together the Library Building Program Committee, we would hope that you would appoint at least two members from the Library Subcommittee of Measure J, just like was on the downtown park and other major projects in the city, just so that we can all keep abreast of what's happening. But thank you very much for moving that forward, and I look forward to working with you on this project.
Thank you. Our next speaker is William Christensen, followed by Will Camparsy, followed by Terry Toussaint.
Evening, Mayor Coors and council members. My husband and I have been residents of Palm Springs for 17 years, full-time for the last 12. During that time, I've worked for Eisenhower as a physician in Cathedral City. I am a member of the Kennel Club of Palm Springs, a delegate to the American Kennel Club, and a board member of the K-9 Health Foundation, a member of its scientific review committee. I would like to object to city staff's use of the demeaning label "backyard breeder," a term without literal meaning and not in accord with the Palm Springs' mission statement to be an inclusive world-class city. As many have learned, demeaning labels are used to denigrate and isolate an individual or a group. Neither the American Kennel Club nor any local dog or cat club is consulted in the development of this ordinance. Rather, city staff work with Friends of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter, the current contractor. Without imputing the high quality of the Friends' work, any contractor writing his own ticket will veer toward his own interests, which won't necessarily coincide with the best interests of the general community. One million dogs are currently imported every year, many from impoverished regions of the world, and none subject to health screening or rejection at the point of entry. Some bring with them diseases new to American dogs, which may be transmissible to their owners. Rather than restrict responsible local breeders, the city should work with them on the production of friendly, healthy puppies for the public. I would strongly recommend that this proposed ordinance be reworked, and would be happy to join you in this work. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Will Camparsy, followed by Terry Toussaint, followed by Tim Murphy. Hello.
Thank you. My name is Will Camparsy. It has been my honor to have been able to take care of the pets of this valley for the past 15 years. I've been a dog groomer out here. You know, when I was looking at this ordinance, I was shocked at the amount of fees. It got so complicated, fee for this, fee for that, even so much so as to double the fees on our senior citizens, you know, people that are in restricted incomes. We want to be able to foster good relationships between people and pets, not make it too overly complicated. And I'd just like to say something. Remember, all dog breeders are not bad. Are there bad ones out there? Sure are. But there are those of us that have dedicated our entire lives to bettering man's best friend. So I just want you to remember, when you're looking at all of these fees, when you statistically look at every city that has done this, it has actually decreased the amount of revenue to the animal shelters. So it ends up being prohibited to what we're actually trying to do. So things really need to be reworked here. So I would love to work with you, and I thank you guys so very much.
Great. Thank you very much. Next speaker is Terry Toussaint, followed by Tim Murphy, followed by Craig Hill, followed by Darrell Weiss.
Thank you for letting me address you, council. One thing I would like to point out, Bill recommended that we could help lend our expertise to tweaking the ordinance. We counted up, we have approaching 500 years of cumulative breeding experience in the Kennel Club of Palm Springs, which says two things. One, we've got very old members, and two, we probably have something to offer. Anyway, I'm here to speak on the community impact of the Kennel Club of Palm Springs. You should have a copy of a presentation that has some photos on it. I've included the photos for a couple of reasons. The first couple show the majesty of the location where we hold the Kennel Club. The second two, we hold the Kennel Club Palm Springs Dog Show. The second two show the magnitude of the dog show. It is one of the largest and most prestigious shows in the U.S., and talk about attracting visitors. We get dogs and visitors and exhibitors from all over the country. This year, approximately 11,000 dogs were exhibited over a four-day period. We estimate that 12,000 people attended. It's held on, it requires 40 acres of the Empire Polo Grounds. We have 300-plus RVs. We park over 6,000 cars on the weekend, and we have 45 vendors. The estimated economic impact, based on statistics gathered by the American Kennel Club, approaches $2 million. The community impact of the Kennel Club on this is that last year, we donated $2,000 to the Friends of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter.
Great. Thank you. Your time is up, but appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You can see the rest of it.
Great, thank you. Our next speaker is Tim Murphy, followed by Craig Hill, then Darrell Weiss, and then Garrett Demarest.
Hi, my name's Tim Murphy. I have been involved with the Cat Fancy for 36 years. I have been a judge for the American Cat Fancy Association for 20 years. The Cat Fancy brings in, also brings in a lot of revenue for the city as well. We put on two to three shows in the city at the leisure center, and we have also rented the convention center and done a show there, and used the Renaissance Hotel for our regional banquets. We bring in people from all over the country as well. We also try to include some of the community in our shows by using the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts and the Boys and Girls Club. We have also made contributions to the Friends of the Animal Shelter, and we are opposed to this proposition because you're punishing the wrong people. We are not backyard breeders. We are breeders that have been doing this for a long time. We register our catteries with the Cat Fancy. We are responsible with the Cat Fancy. The Cat Fancy polices their own people. They have breed awareness people that go out, and their main job is to focus on shelters and finding any purebred animals in the shelter, and rescuing them, and getting them back to their breeders. Less than 1% of the cats in the shelter are purebreds. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Craig Hill, followed by Darrell Weiss, Garrett Demarest, and Corina Romero.
My name is Craig Hill. I am an American Kennel Club breeder of merit. I have lived in Palm Springs full of our time for the last 17 years. I occasionally make breed a litter, and it looks like if I get a breeder's permit, my house is open to anybody who wants to come in. There's no details about the search, you know, who can do it, who's authorized to it. It's all extremely vague about everything. So if I get a permit, I've allowed anybody to come to my house without any type of court order, stuff, or whatever else, my privacy is all gone. Also, when I place my dogs, most of the dogs, none of my dogs have never stayed in Palm Springs. They go out of state or out of the country, and the people who have the dogs have a right of privacy. Why do I need to tell, you know, who they are, where they live, and all their personal information? And who has access to all this information? You know, does anybody walk into the animal shelter and request addresses and stuff where my home is? There's no, everything is very vague, especially about somebody coming to my home without any type of thing. And because a backyard breeder is horrible. The last time I bred a dog, I flew to Victoria, British Columbia. Is that a backyard? I mean, I bought a backyard breeding, and I felt insulted that I included with all the same type of people. I know where all the dogs I ever bred are. I know what, you know, the disposition and stuff, and I just cannot feel you can lump me as a backyard, you know, breeder, and that's what this ordinance does. You know, I think the Kennel Club, you know, the Palm Springs Animal Shelter does a wonderful job. You know, they do services and stuff. But also, I have a right, I think, to breed my own dogs and to place them with people I want, and they have a privacy also. Would you like to get a permit that allows anybody to come in your house at 48 hours' notice? I think that's absolutely horrible. I'm really resentful of the fact that the Kennel Club of Palm Springs, or the Dog Fancy Community here, was not included on this type of, you know, ordinance. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next speaker is Darrell Weiss, followed by Garrett Demarest, Corina Romero, and Brian Karas.
Hi, I'm Darrell Weiss, and I've lived here in Palm Springs for 36 years, and I have bred dogs since the '70s, and none of my dogs ever ended up in a shelter. Us respectable breeders are very careful in our contracts and stuff, that if something goes wrong, we get that puppy back, we get that dog back, we take care of our stuff. So again, you're looking at two different things. I don't want to be called a backyard breeder either. I'm also an AKC judge, which is American Kennel Club judge, and I travel all over the world judging, which is very fortunate for me. I really enjoy it. And to do that, I had to, the very beginning of that, I had to have bred so many litters and had so many champions. So that would have restricted me to do what I love so much today if I wasn't able to do that. The two things I want to talk about is 4E, I'm trying to watch my time, limit one litter per 12 months. There are times when a show breeder who breeds infrequently would like, for different reasons, to have maybe more than one litter in a year, and then maybe not breed for two or three years. There was years that went by that I didn't breed. But maybe I had a female that I bred and had one dog, because I bred small dogs. That means I'd have to wait another whole year if I only had one puppy. I mean, you know, or Doverman might have eight puppies. So it's unfair to say one litter per year. Also, if your female has pyrometria, which is a disease that happens sometimes when they have puppies, a vet, most vets will tell you that she should be bred the next time and then fixed. They should be bred together. So that means that you wouldn't be able to do that within a year's period. The other one is the 4E3, requires a breeder's permit applicant to state the number of past litters. I shouldn't remember that far back.
Okay, thank you. Garrett Demarest, then Corina Romero, Brian Karas, and Paul Hendrickson.
Mr. Mayor and council, I've been a resident of Palm Springs now for about six years. I am a former owner of a purebred dog. My family has been breeding purebred dogs in the past. I come out of a background in education. I certainly believe that the key to the most effective method of reducing the overpopulation is through education, not through legislation. I agree with the first speaker today, wholeheartedly, that it's the health, the safety of our animals that is of utmost importance here. I do not believe that this legislation that's before us accomplishes any of that. We also need to be very, very clear about the distinction between responsible and ethical breeders, which you've heard speak tonight, and the unethical, or the quote backyard breeders who are irresponsible, and you've heard some testimony as to whether they will comply, or who will comply with this legislation if it passes. There's a lot of community benefits, too, that haven't really been brought out, that there have been donations from the Kennel Club to various animal shelters, to the animal shelter here in Palm Springs. There also have been coordinated funding and disaster relief programs that the Kennel Club has put on to help with disaster relief. Now, hopefully, we won't have to have some of that here, but it's always a possibility. They have helped out in other communities. They are prepared to help here as well. Obedience classes support for the K-9 unit with the police department has been part of their programs as well. But I believe that breeding is a privilege. It's a responsibility that we have to the animals, and I believe that we need to be educative and not, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Corina Romero?
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. Thank you so much for your time today. My name is Corina Romero, and I'm part of Global Go Consulting, formerly known as High Road Consulting Group. I just, I'm here just to bring up questions as I read the staff report for 5A, and for one of the things, the CWA. I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great idea to want a CWA to uplift and provide the residents of Palm Springs with greater opportunities. As I was reading the staff report, I couldn't find who the CWA will apply to. Historically, they've been only applied to tax-funded projects such as like city buildings and universities. Mayor Kors wrote, he set forth a vision in the Desert Sun back in December 2019 that supported the historical use of CWAs for publicly funded projects. Again, who are CWAs applying to in this, in the staff report? Regarding labor peace agreements, the state is already requiring cannabis businesses to enter into labor peace agreements 60 days from hiring their 20th non-supervisor employee. My question is, is Palm Springs proprietary interest comparable to the significance of the state's interest? That's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Brian Caris, followed by Paul Hendrickson, and Bill Perez after Paul.
Good evening. Like you said, I'm Brian Caris. I'm here representing Granite Construction and talking about 5A in relation to the Community Workforce Agreement, the CWA. Granite has reviewed the details of the CWA, and it's in line with other local city agreements and also our master labor agreement. We have absolutely no problem with what we see in the agreement, and we fully support the CWA moving forward for the city of Palm Springs. I'm keeping it nice and short, so thank you guys for your time. Much appreciated.
Great. Thank you very much. Next speakers, Paul Hendrickson, followed by Bill Perez, and then Karen Dorn.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff. Good to see you this evening. Briefly on two items. Item I, my husband and I are often referred to as the no-smoking guys here in Palm Springs. So many might be surprised to hear that we've come before City Council and the Planning Commission multiple times, speaking in favor of cannabis lounges. Why? Because it makes sense and it's practical. But what doesn't really make sense and practical and troubles us a little bit is that one is going to be going in 100 feet away from residential homes, new homes, and that troubles us. And I'm just hoping maybe it troubles you, too, concerns you when you discuss this matter. Next item is item O, and that's about the parking limit in the City Council, I mean, the City Hall's parking lot. Many of us are usual suspects, as our friend David Friedman calls. Many of us who volunteer here a lot here in the city and at City Hall, we find ourselves at meetings, two, sometimes three meetings in a day, and quickly, three, four, five hours will go past, as you, many of you all know. So as much as it makes sense to try and do something for the parking, if you can consider that at that time, those of us who are the usual suspects spending so much time trying to help the city. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Next speaker is Bill Perez, followed by Karen Dorn.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. It's nice to be here tonight. Wonderful seeing you all. I'm Bill Perez. I'm the Executive Secretary and Business Manager for the Bill and Construction Trades Council of Riverside and San Bernardino Counties. We represent all the construction craft unions in the two county area. Of course, we have, I have a few friends with us here tonight. They're readily identifiable by the vest, so it's always wonderful to be in such fine company of the men and women and apprentices and the journeyman of the construction trades. We're here tonight to ask you to consider, moving forward, the Community Workforce Agreement. We do believe that we can do even better job with these agreements going forward in terms of those community benefits. Typically, a project labor is a street, straight PLA. Community workforce agreement really drills down and tries to get those community benefit portions of those, of those agreements in terms of apprenticeship outreach, in terms of reaching into underserved communities, in terms of making sure that contractors, regardless of wherever they come from, who are awarded work, that's duly awarded under public contract code, we ensure that whoever is hired here will be hired locally as well. So keep the money in the community, keep rocking and rolling in terms of local money, supporting local business, therefore supporting more opportunities for more local people. Apprenticeship is 100 years in the, of history. That's the training grounds for building trades crafts. I represent 32 of those unions. There's 28 corresponding apprenticeship programs, each one for each one of those crafts, and I couldn't be more proud to be before you tonight, ask you to move this forward. I also need to add on 5A as well, under the cannabis portion of it. Our good friend Ricardo Cisneros wants to send his regards. He was unable to make it tonight, had a little bit of a health issue this afternoon, so I do hope that we move both those efforts, both these efforts forward and do what's right for the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Karen Dorn, followed by Aaron Velarde.
I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Palm Springs Kennel Club. And we may have seen on television how an astronaut that returned from space after 11 months greeted her dog, and the dog absolutely went bananas. They were so happy to see her. Yet this ordinance says that if a dog gets loose and it can be, it can be put in a different home by the shelter within four days, and somebody that may be on a business trip or a vacation, or let me remind you, we have a huge amount of snowbirds that fill our economy, and if their pet got loose while they were back taking care of business at home, they would be very upset to find that they could not reclaim their animal. It's intended to say that in four days, this animal would become closer and more bonded to that new family than it was for the family that it had been with for years and years. I have had dogs that have come back to me with their owners just to visit, and when they get within a few miles of my home, they get ecstatic. They are so happy. They know where they are. And so animals have a lot more feelings and, you know, and bonding than it's given credit for. Also, one last comment on this ordinance. I urge you to work with the Kennel Club of Palm Springs in revising it, but if this ordinance is so good, why do the Friends of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter exempt themselves from it?
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Next speaker is Aaron Velarde, followed by Sal Amesquita, followed by Laura Amesquita.
Good evening, Mayor Kors, Mayor Protim Holstich, and members of the council. My name is Aaron Velarde, and I'm an organizer with United Food and Commercial Workers Union, Local 1167. Locally, we represent over 19,000 members in the counties of Riverside, San Bernardino, and parts of Imperial and LA Counties. UFCW 1167 has been focused on working with different cities in the area to ensure that more of them regulate the cannabis industry. Our main objective, as the cannabis industry continues to grow, is that workers have access to good-paying jobs that will keep our communities afloat. We believe that the council, as well as city staff, has been doing a great job with cannabis here in the city of Palm Springs. We believe that lowering the trigger threshold to require a labor peace agreement down to five employees is a good step forward from state law, which will create a more neutral environment for cannabis workers to decide if they would like union representation. I would like to address one suggestion, which we, which we also brought up during the Business Retention Subcommittee meeting, that we would like for you to consider. So the proposed draft ordinance attached to the agenda for discussion purposes describes the five or more employees that trigger the labor peace agreement as full-time equivalent, or FTE for short. We believe this could be problematic and will lead to the creation of more part-time jobs, which is not something we advocate for. We stand by the belief that one job should be enough. Also, not defining what full-time equivalent is could also open the door to different interpretations of who is considered a full-time employee. Therefore, our suggestion is to not have full-time equivalent as part of the employee description, and have it just read five non-supervisory employees. We believe this will be more clear and specific for everyone. And lastly, California state law does not include any FTE language. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Sal Amesquita, followed by Laura Amesquita, followed by Josh Light and Nick Barriet.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name's Salvador Amesquita. I'm a resident of Palm Springs for my entire life, and I'm also a union carpenter here representing the Southwest Regional Council. We've been having to travel for work to Los Angeles, San Diego. I know personally, I started in the Central Valley, and I'm a father, a husband. I, I'm an active community member. I try to be as involved as I can, but these long commutes, like, this is bedtime for me almost. Like, I have to get up at 3:00 in the morning to be at work, you know, at 6:00 or 7:00. And if you were to take the steps necessary to pass this Community Workforce Agreement and have us, give us the ability to work closer to home, we would, we would be more present with our families, with the community. We try to volunteer with the community, try to have the carpenters help out where we can, and we just want to spend more time, you know, closer to home. We, we go out there and we kill ourselves every day. We don't hold back. We work as hard as we can to build these huge, you know, monuments, and we take a lot of pride in it. We take a lot of pride in being able to tell everybody, we built this, you know, with, with our hands, with our brothers. So we would like to thank you for everything you're doing to pass this agreement, and, you know, just thanks again. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Laura Amesquita, followed by Josh Light, followed by Nick Barriet and Naomi Soto.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you for giving us this platform to share our concerns and our issues. My name is Laura. I've been a resident here for 16 years. I am a mom, a wife, and I'm a teacher for the Palm Springs Unified School District. As I mentioned, I'm a mom. We have a four-year-old son, and it has been very inconvenient that the lack of union hired construction projects here in our valley require my husband to commute long distance. As you just mentioned, he'll commute to LA, San Diego, the Central Valley. I see that new construction projects are appearing left and right, and, you know, this has given us hope that maybe my husband will be able to join us for dinner, at least one meal a week, or spend an evening at the park with our son. So you guys can only imagine how disheartening it is when he comes back to tell me that they are not hiring union carpenters. So hiring union carpenters will not only allow the families of these really hard-working men to stay with their families, but it will also ensure the finest quality and safety standards. Thank you again.
Great. Thank you. Josh Light will be followed by Nick Barriet and Naomi Soto.
Mayor, City Council, my name is John Light. I'm a representative for Labor's Local 1184. We have an office over here in Thousand Palms, and we are really excited about the possibility of this passing. We have a lot of local members, and they go elsewhere for work, and once again, we would love to, we urge you to pass this, push this forward. We've got 4,000 members in Riverside County, and they really look forward to this. We appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Nick Barriet, followed by Naomi Soto.
Hi. I'm Nick Barriet. I've lived here all my life, but I haven't worked here in 20 years. Work is bad, is the pay, wages. When I graduated high school, me and all my buddies, we went and joined the carpenters' union, and we were making a living by the time we were early 20s. Everybody owned houses, and it was tough. I was a single parent 15 years ago. I leave at 3:30 in the morning. I don't get home till 6:30. But I was lucky I had medical benefits, because my daughter turned into a drug addict. Not, for me not being home, it's tough. And I would like to see this go through, because if someone graduates from high school, Palm Springs High School, they can at least make a living in construction, because they can't, there's no way they can live on these wages. So I'd like to see this go through. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Naomi Soto, followed by Tobias Wolf, followed by Tony DeTrinadad.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Kors and City Council members. My name is Naomi Soto. I'm a Palm Springs resident, and I'm here to speak on two agenda items. So first, Agenda Item 4A, I'm a member of the Measure J Commission. I was actually a member of the Library Subcommittee for Measure J, and was part of the Library Building Subcommittee as well. I'm strongly supportive that, of the library, the Library Strategies Consulting Group, and the Rios Clemente Hale Studios move forward with the conceptual planning of the library and Sunrise Park. Measure J has already approved of these funds, and we're eagerly looking forward to the results of this study. We recognize a project of this magnitude needs to be meticulously studied, and we're hoping that progress keeps moving forward and doesn't stall too much. On Agenda Item 4B, I just want to applaud the city's efforts recently on inclusion, things like moving commission meetings to the evenings, and also translation services sends a big message that the council is really interested in hearing from other community members. And I see the youth council as part of that. I think it's an extension of these efforts, and to hear from parents, families, youth, young adults, space needs to be intentionally created where they can actively participate. And I encourage the council to establish this youth council to foster and develop our future community leaders, but most importantly, to listen to our young residents right now. So thank you so much.
Great. Thank you. And the next speaker is Tobias Wolf, followed by Tony DeTrinadad.
Good evening. My name is Tobias Wolf, and I had the great honor of serving on the California Voting Rights Act Working Group a couple of years ago, along with my colleagues Kathy Wormick and Stephen Moses and Ed Doobie, who are here, and Councilmember Garner was on our group as well. And this council did some very important work, building on, taking and building on the recommendations of the CVRA group in relation to district-wide elections. And the purpose of district elections, which now, of course, define our government here in Palm Springs, was to make it possible for a broader cross-section of the community to serve in government and to serve on this council. And there is a second half of our recommendations that the council hasn't yet taken up and that's on your agenda tonight, which is making service possible in practical terms for a much broader array of the residents of Palm Springs. The work that you all do is important. I think the testimony that you're hearing tonight makes it clear that it's important to everybody who lives in this city, and it ought to be the case that everybody who lives in this city has the capacity and the opportunity to serve on this council. In order for that to be true, one of the things that needs to be possible is to work on this council and to earn a salary that can support a household. This is a full-time job. It should be compensated like a full-time job. It shouldn't be necessary to be independently wealthy, retired, or have a professional career that has time flexibility that allows you to both serve on the council and also keep a professional job. People who have been serving in that capacity have done so honorably and generously, but it shouldn't be necessary to have that kind of life in order to be a member of this council. We made a series of recommendations that I urge you all to take very seriously about, at the very least, having the salary for this job be the median household income in the city of Palm Springs, so that it's possible for the average resident of this city to support a household while also serving on this council. Without that kind of salary reform, which I know is politically difficult, there will still be barriers to everybody being able to serve in this important job. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tony DeTrinadad, followed by Carol Silverberg, and then Joe Witscher.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Tony DeTrinadad with the Painters and Allied Trades Regional Council, District Council 36, and we represent over 10,000 men and women in Southern California in the finishing construction industry, and we're also here in support of the Community Workforce Agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Carol Silverberg, followed by Joe Witscher, followed by Darrell Fleck.
Hi. My name is Carol Silverberg, and I reside in Thousand Palms, California, and I have a legal 10-dog kennel license. I've been a show Pomeranian breeder for many years, and I am I've been a show Pomeranian breeder for many years, and I am an AKC breeder of merit, member of the American Pomeranian Club, and the City of Angels Pomeranian Club. I lived in the Coachella Valley for 20 years. I own five homes here, and my yearly tax base in the Coachella Valley is $29,000 of property taxes. I'm concerned with this bill restricting dog breeding in your city close. I've worked for nine months to get my kennel license. I do not primarily breed to sell dogs. I breed to produce my own dogs for myself to show. My dogs are known all over the world. This is a very costly, time-consuming, committed, and heartbreaking hobby for many years, for sure. In no way am I a backyard breeder. In fact, my dogs live better than most people. They are never caged, eat the best, drink the best, and are totally safe and protected, and are never in harm's way. Many of your residents in your city and the Coachella Valley are AKC judges. Dog showing has been around since 1874, when the first American Dog Show was part of American Culture Heritage, and everybody knows the Westminster Dog Show. Most of the breeders who show are just like me. We are the backbone of American dog showing. This type of ordinance you're proposing will affect everybody in this region eventually with restrictions, causing people like me immense hardship, financial hardship, or having to leave and move elsewhere. The type of breeding you're talking about is nothing what I do or people I know do. We are responsible for our dogs. They never end up in a shelter or lost, et cetera. They are our lives. It's not going to mean anything to a backyard breeder. They don't follow the rules. In most cases, many things, these dogs are sick, they're lost, sold in a box on a street corner, or made for finding bait. Most people don't know what they are doing and don't care the outcome. These are the horrors that we face. When you're an ethical breeder, you go by science. You do genetic testing, only certain dogs that you use for breeding. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Joe Witcher, followed by Darrell Flick and Daniel Gennello.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for having us here tonight. My name is Joe Witcher. I am a 32-year sheet metal worker, past 10 years serving as a union representative for the Sheet Metal Workers Local 105. I can tell you from experience, and let me be clear, as a union representative, union representative's mission is to raise the standard for all workers, not only our dues-paying workers. I got a couple of guys with me here that work in my office, Abel and Jordan and Rick, and back there is Brian and Dwight. They spend 75% of their time on the union workers, union dues dime, going out there, 75% of their time helping the non-union worker get their wages. You know, we don't hold it against any workers or want to put any contractors out of business. We want to see the standard raised for everybody. But I got to tell you, it was touching to hear everybody speak on the difficulties of the commutes, because that's what it is. I cover Riverside County, and, you know, when we get a big job out here in the inland empire, most of our, most of our workers, 6,000 members, most of them can afford houses in the inland empire, and that's where they live. And so, when we can get those guys working out in the inland empire, I know what that means for their quality of life, how much that does for them. But I got to also tell you, the things I've experienced, you know, I've seen it out here when I was a brand-new rep, and I had no experience. I was a little bit intimidated when about 40 or 50 workers came out of Arizona and took on the mechanical right here at Rancho Mirage High School. You know, these are things I've experienced and seen. But not only did we not get the work for our local workers in the middle of a recession, but they didn't know our California Energy Title 24 codes. This is California. We have seismic codes. We have construction standards they don't know. You get the quality work with the community workforce, so I urge you to support it. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. The next speaker is Darrell Flick, followed by Daniel Gennello.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name is Darrell Flick, and I'm here on behalf of Village Fest. The board has asked for an exemption from the municipal code that has impacted the scheduling timeframe for commissions and boards. Our concern is that the small artisan who travels to come and present, to become a part of Village Fest, will not take that first step. With traffic and families and other things, they are not often working a regular schedule. Our fear is that these folks may not take the first step. We recognize that Village Fest is an evening event, but when it gets to the point of their attendance, there is a financial impact to them, which then facilitates daycare and other things. By the time they get to us, there's nothing, they're not taking that first step. They need to take the first step voluntarily. Our other concerns are that, in the future, board members may not be as likely to become involved, as it takes away from their family time, where the afternoons are a little more convenient. Much of our correspondence from the public, which I understand is one of the nature of the amendment, is usually through electronics and written media. We very seldom see someone come in and ask to speak during public comment. And finally, on a personal note, we ask a lot of our staff on four nights a week, out on the streets, no matter what the weather is, I'd like to give them the opportunity to have two more nights out of each month home with their families for dinner. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next speaker is Benjamin Brayfield, followed by Kathy Wolf.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Daniel Gennello. I am a resident of Palm Springs. I am also a board member for Village Fest as well, along with Darrell. I am here to support the request for exemption for all the reasons that Darrell mentioned. In the past 12 months, over 2/3 of the applicants for Village Fest permits have come from outside of Coachella Valley. So, the commuting here during rush hour could be a hardship, and I believe would be a hardship. Many of them are running cottage industries out of their home, have childcare issues, have families as well. Coming here in the evening, many of the food vendors actually prepare food to bring here as well, so they'd be doing that late in the day when, when they should be serving dinner to their family. And, and as well, the other members of the, of the board are all in support of this as well. So, I, we just respectfully request an exemption from changing the time to after 5:30. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Kathy, Benjamin Brayfield, followed by Kathy Wolf. Benjamin Brayfield. Okay. So, Kathy Wolf, followed by Ginny Bourgeois, followed by Dr. Sylvia Nag.
Good evening. I, I'm Kathy Wolf, and I actually volunteer at the Palm Springs Animal Shelter several days a week. And I'd like to tell you about three little Chihuahuas that came in last year, that they were a Chihuahua Doxen kind of size, but we believe that two of them were purebred Chihuahuas. And these dogs were being used to, that we understood, as breeders, as, as dogs that were having puppies, and that then those puppies, I suppose, would be sold, and then the mothers would have another litter, and those puppies would be sold. One of those dogs that came in was Hazel. And when Hazel came in, she came with two other dogs who were all in different states of panic mode, once they entered the shelter. They were in a kennel together. The first two, we were able to socialize fairly quickly, but by quickly, I mean, it would probably took about three weeks to a month, to where we could get to a point where we could actually touch these dogs. Apparently, they had never received any kind of human interaction. So, those, the first two were adopted, and we were left with Hazel, who would not allow us to touch her, would not allow, was not potty-trained, had basically no socialization. So, I and many of my other volunteers, my co-volunteers, worked with Hazel for probably three months, until we were able to get her to a point where she would allow someone to touch her. So, Hazel was obviously not one of our kennel club dogs, but Hazel was being used to breed. And then she was dumped at the shelter when her owners were done with her. We spent many, many hours getting Hazel to a point where she could be adopted out to, to a family. And in the situation that we had with Hazel, that was countless volunteer hours that we spent. I'd like you to think about those dogs when you're putting these ordinances together. I agree with Tiffany. I think this probably isn't strong enough, but it's a start. And we need to regulate the breeders, or we need to ban them in Palm Springs if we're going to continue to have situations like, like Hazel. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Ginny Bourgeois, followed by Dr. Sylvia Nag, followed by Bill Rutten and Bonnie Rutten.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Jeanne Bourgeois. I'm, have been asked to speak tonight on number 3A, on behalf of Craig Ewing, who is a volunteer and the former director of operations for the Palm Springs Animal Shelter. Please accept these comments on behalf of the proposed ordinance regarding animal regulations under consideration. First, please know that I have experience as a volunteer and former director of operations of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter. In these capacities, I've worked directly with city animal control and the staff and volunteers of the shelter. I believe I can offer an important perspective on the issues being addressed. Remove owner's right to redeem animal 30 days after adoption. This provision may have made sense when the shelter primarily received animals through the enforcement efforts of city officers. However, this shelter now receives animals many different ways, including owner surrender and stray pickups. Further, microchip identification is more and more common in domestic pets, and within the first couple of days of receiving a stray animal, the shelter makes considerable effort to return it to its owner. Only after this effort is exhausted and the emancipation date is reached, is the animal made available to the public for adoption. Consequently, it is no longer necessary to give a former owner 30 days following adoption to claim an animal. It is especially inappropriate if the adoption happens weeks or even months after the animal's first taken in. I urge you to consider the difficulties faced by all, when the shelter must seize an animal from an adopter to return it to an owner who did not respond to earlier outreach. Number two, regulate backyard breeding of dogs and cats. The unregulated breeding of dogs and cats can cause an industry that has many responsible breeders to be sullied by those who irresponsibly abuse female adults, kittens, and puppies. The proposed restrictions on numbers of litters and permitting or inspections will help assure that only responsible breeders operate within the city. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you. The next speaker is Dr. Sylvia Nag.
Hi, my name is Dr. Sylvia Nagy. I'm the medical director at the Palm Springs Animal Shelter. I've been there for the last two years, and in that time, I have seen almost 1/3 of the dogs come in as unwanted puppies. So, about 1,500 dogs per year, about 500 or so are unwanted, undesired puppies, and they are either found, or we found them in a box, or we lost, or, or just people that do not say that they bred them, but they found a perfectly clean dog somehow. And so, the numbers of puppies definitely, and the types of puppies, definitely do not correlate to a person who's responsible. The responsible breeders are doing their best, and there are other people out there in this area that are breeding dogs to either, to not, is not necessarily to make money or to do what the AKC breeders are doing, which is to better the breed, show the dogs or anything like that. But they are most likely not getting their dogs spayed and neutered. As a veterinary surgeon, I do about 20 spay and neuters a day at the shelter, and almost 70% of our dogs that are coming in are unspayed and neutered from being lost or unwanted. And these are the dogs that jump fences or have mismates and breed dogs, and then it's a surprise, or it's an unwanted litter, or it's a litter that couldn't be sold or given away to friends. And with the amount of puppies and the problems I see, in the last two years, there's been three or four severe genetic defects, and then several under, other genetic defects. So, these are not responsible breeders, and I think the ordinance should regulate some sort of breeding outside of the responsible breeders.
Great. Thank you. Bill Rutten? Bill, yeah, you're up.
Good evening. Tamara Hedges, the president of Friends of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter, could not be here this evening, and she asked me to read a letter that she has prepared. Mayor Coors, council members, and Dr. Ready, I am sorry that I am unable to be here in person this evening. I want to thank you for the support the city has given to help pets and their people in the city of Palm Springs over this past decade. Because of you, we have a public open admissions animal shelter that serves as a model for other communities across the country. As you know, Friends of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter has been operating the city's animal shelter since November 2012. During that time, we have witnessed firsthand the impact of having no breeding restrictions in place in Palm Springs. Cats and dogs are used as cash machines, producing litter after litter of kittens and puppies who are sold to the highest bidder. The kittens and puppies who have health issues or don't make the cut in terms of quality of product are very often dumped on our shelter doorstep, or worse, dumped in the open desert, parking lots, or dumpsters to die. Dogs and cats who age out of their breeding years or become sick or injured suffer the same fate. This ordinance aims to shut down these irresponsible breeders, but maintains a path for reputable and responsible breeders. Those who are genuinely passionate about the breed, provide quality care and training, and carefully screen potential owners. Thank you for your time and consideration of this important ordinance. Signed, Tamara Hedges, President, Friends of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter. Thank you.
Bonnie Rutten, followed by Jana Hayes, followed by Claire Grant.
Oh, good evening, everyone. I'm Bonnie Rutten. I'm a friend of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter. You know, actually, one of the breeders earlier almost spoke to, did speak to, to this issue when she said backyard breeders had nothing to do with legitimate breeding, you know, that they did, their motives weren't entirely pure. And, you know, that's the issue that I'm concerned about and that I wanted to address tonight, you know? To me, backyard breeding, it, I, it sounds like a business to me, you know? A money, a money-raising business. And I understand, for instance, people that want to do cooking out of their house, you know, they have to be licensed and inspected just to run, run a, a business at home. And I'm just thinking, shouldn't it be equally important for somebody who wants to raise or breed animals to have to follow the same safeguards and requirements? You know, if, if you're selling food from your home, I mean, shouldn't, shouldn't selling puppies be as equally licensed as selling cupcakes from your house, you know? It, it just seems logical to me that they should just be, you know, randomly allowed to breed and, and sell them. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jana Hayes, followed by Claire Grant.
Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I know that the emphasis this evening has been on dog breeding, but I am here to represent the importance of this ordinance for cat breeding. As a board member of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter and as a volunteer manager of the shelter's community cat program, I have seen firsthand the deplorable conditions that exist in homes of irresponsible cat breeders. In fact, the majority of the hoarding cases the shelter has dealt with have been created by cat breeders who have let their breeding practices get out of hand. The result is that cats are sick from unsanitary conditions, too small of a kennel, overflowing litter pans, crowding cockroaches, to name a few. Their illnesses range from upper respiratory infections to heart, kidney, and urinary conditions that last a lifetime. Many suffer ailments and deformities from inbreeding. Many of these cats are not socialized and therefore are rendered not adoptable. This ordinance is a good first step to help in controlling the overpopulation of cats in our community. Thank you for the privilege of speaking for the cats.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Claire Grant, followed by Marta Jara, followed by Ginny Foote.
Hi there, I'm Claire Grant. This is Gidget.
This is Gidget, and Gidget's a wonderful dog. She's an absolutely brilliant dog. She's bright and shiny, she's charming, and she's the smartest dog I've ever had. And I love her, and I value her companionship. Unfortunately, her previous owners only valued her reproductive organs. It's very sad, but she had multiple litters, and then at the young age of three years old, she evidently had proven herself to be a bad puppy factory. And so, she was just let go. She was just turned out on the street, of a good Palm Springs neighborhood, but in the middle of August, so not a great time to send a dog out. And, you know, like any animal, or any human for that matter, who's been forced to reproduce every time they're able, she, when she was found, she was physically depleted. She was dehydrated, she, her coat and her eyes were dull, and she, her teeth were falling out. And she'd only been on the street for a few hours, so that wasn't the cause of any of these issues. She basically had been used up and then tossed away. As a city, you know, we can't insist that people love or even respect their animals. That's nobody's job. But we can take steps to reduce the number of people who see animals simply as a cash cow, who look at animals for their reproductive abilities, and then use these animals up and then just literally throw them away. And, oh, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Marta Jarra, followed by Ginny Foote.
The greatness of a nation and its moral progress can be judged by the way its animals are treated, Mahatma Gandhi once said. I decided to speak today as a registered veterinary technician because I want to share with you just one experience of the many hoarding cases I've helped with. Since finding my true calling, I've come to learn what truly is important in life, which is standing up for what matters, even if there will be no financial profit. I truly believe that no human or animal should live under the conditions I've seen. 2015. Picture walking into a warehouse-type of office with no windows, so dimly lit your eyes have to adjust to the darkness. It smells of mold and dust and dirty litter boxes and dry feces. I asked the animal control officer regarding the floor that is drenched in a white powder that's going to stain my shoes for days, and he says they had to lay down the borax days ago. There are three hallways of wire kennels lined up side by side, stacked three high, with one or two adult-sized cats living in each one. As you walk by, some cats are so terrified of seeing a human being that they are crouching tiny, tiny, to try to hide their big bodies in their regular-sized litter box. The kibble on one of the floor cages looked so strangely shaped to me, so I walked right up to it, and as my foot stepped right next to the cage, hundreds of cockroaches scattered away from inside the bowl, revealing the dry kibble that was underneath. That was their food. What was just as disturbing as seeing the squatter the cats were living in was that when I finally left the premises with everybody, there was a proudly displayed court board with dozens of ribbons, dozens of ribbons, talking about all the prizes these purebreds had won. If you still don't have a place in your heart for animals, you may have a place for the humans living in these conditions. And I'm sorry, but to all due respect to the lady who said 1874, AKC, we're not against those people. But in 1874, women didn't vote until 1919.
Thank you. Perfect segue to Ginny Foote, followed by Gabriella Amster, and then Kathy Wurmerich.
So...
And Chloe. And Chloe's here, too.
This is Chloe's here tonight. But I just wanted to just make a quick correction before I started speaking about what Chloe's here for, but that the Kennel Club of Palm Springs is in Indio. It's not in Palm Springs, it's in Indio. And when I was on the council, I really tried to get them to our convention center, and that didn't work. They've given $2,000 a year, this year, to the animal shelter, and not very much other. They're a group of great people, but that's not why we're here tonight. We're here tonight about breeding. And breeding is really the forced impregnation of dogs and cats. And I have in front of me Chloe. And Chloe is, came to us when she was seven years old. She was a breeder. She was breeding, she had three, had already three or four litters, and at seven years old, it's kind of old for a dog to be bred. And so, the owner didn't want the dog anymore, and gave, wanted to find somebody to take this dog. Well, this dog, to this day, you can't come at her with your hand because she cowers. She's lived in our house for three years, and she's slept with us, she's gone everywhere with us, we've given her so much love, but she has not recovered yet from being this breeding dog. And so, we're here, Chloe is not an exception. At the shelter, we hear these stories every day about dogs that are bred and overbred, and when that, when they're not needed anymore. Go on Craigslist, or go on Facebook, and you'll see all of these sales. Go to the, go to the street fair, and you'll see people selling puppies. This is not a business that we should encourage in our city, and it's not a practice of using animals like this to make, just for the purpose of making money. So I really urge you to vote in favor of everything that was on 3A, and for Chloe, and for Gidget, and for all the other dogs that we have in our shelter.
Great, thank you. Our next speaker is Gabriella Amster, followed by Kathy Wurmerich.
Good evening. As the Executive Director of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter, a crown jewel in our city, I thank you, Mayor, City Council, and Dr. Ready for your support and partnership as we continue to work to make Palm Springs an amazing place for animals. I'm grateful for the opportunity to advocate for the backyard breeding ordinance, the elimination of the 30-day redemption ordinance, and consideration of an increase in licensing fees. I know that there are those that may not see any need for a breeding ordinance in our community, and to those people, I say, please come and spend a day with me at the Palm Springs Animal Shelter. For over the 14-plus years I've worked in animal welfare, I have lived in several communities, both urban and rural, and while Palm Springs is absolutely the most amazing of all of them, I'm still surprised by the number of homeless, neglected, and abused animals in our community, a community certainly known as a destination, a vacation oasis, and a sanctuary for desert diversity. But despite that, there is also a real animal welfare crisis in our city. In 2019, we took in nearly 3,000 animals, and this excludes the 2,500 or so cats that came in through our TNR program. Of those, more than 500 could be classified as victims of irresponsible breeding. These animals are often in very poor physical and mental health, and spend months in our shelter while we prepare them for adoption. The medical costs and the costs of the behavior that goes into helping them is extraordinary. Every day, my team and the amazing shelter volunteers that work beside us see animals who are the victims of irresponsible breeding. I know from my experience that communities who have addressed backyard breeding with similar ordinances and enforcement of these ordinances have seen a decline in the number of homeless, neglected, and abused stray and surrendered animals. We can see the same here if you adopt this ordinance tonight. The current 30-day redemption ordinance was established in the early 1970s, from what I understand. It is an antiquated ordinance in both language and intent. Current practices in animal sheltering, social media, pet identification, and other means of locating lost pets has eliminated the need for this redemption. Thank you.
Thank you. So our next speaker is Kathy Wurmerich, followed by Ryan Miro, and then Stephen Moses, who's our last speaker. If there's anyone who hasn't spoken and wants to put in a card, now is the time. Thank you.
Mayor Coors, members of the council. I'm here to speak tonight on 4A and 4C. On 4A, I want to thank Dr. Ready, Marcus Fuller, council members Garner and Holstidge for bringing the ordinance for, not the ordinance, but the contracts to continue the redevelopment of the Palm Springs Library forward. It's especially necessary for the Board of Trustees, the Library Board of Trustees, which I'm on, and the Building Committee, that this effort that we've been involved in for the last year continue to move forward, and this allows it to do so. Both Rios Clemente Hall and Library Strategies are exemplary organizations, and it will be a pleasure to work with them. I have two very small comments on the draft as it stands, just, I think when the Building Committee is put together, it should also include line staff and direct public service staff at the library, who actually get most of the requests and interface with the public the most. The other thing is the online survey that's being recommended, I believe, should be done both on the internet in Survey Monkey and also in paper, and that it should be translated into the languages where people are linguistically isolated. And in our community, that is clearly Spanish, but it may also be Tagalog. So I'd ask you to consider that if we have linguistically isolated people in the Filipino community. The other item I wanted to speak on and echo the comments of my colleague Tobias Wolf is, I want to thank you for looking at the CVRA work group recommendations. I think I can speak, I'm done, okay?
Yes, thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Ryan Miro, and the last one is Stephen Moses.
Good to see you all again. I'm Ryan Miro, I'm the Chief Operating Officer, Row House, Agenda Item 1I. We're back. Last time, we were directed to add an elevator, which we have. We went through the Architectural Advisory Committee, and they like what we've done. So I'm just here to answer any questions, anything you guys need, but thank you so much, appreciate your time.
Great, thank you. And our final speaker is Stephen Moses, unless anyone else submits a card, and they did. See? That's what happens when you invite people to do it, but now is your chance if you still want to. Mr. Moses.
My name is, my name is Stephen Moses, and I welcome this opportunity to thank you. I have the honor to serve as a member of the CV, California Voting Rights Act Working Group with one of you. I really just want to echo what the two wonderful co-chairs, Tobias Wolf and Kathy Wurmerich, have already said to you, and underscore the need for the ability of all of our population to participate in government, and the importance of these additional recommendations to making that happen, and I hope you'll give them great consideration, and I hope you'll adopt many of them. And I guess it may be age before beauty, did she turn over the card behind me? Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. And our next, and at the moment, final speaker is Michelle Avalos.
Can I just have everybody who's here to support Item 3A, please stand up?
Any further speakers, Mr. City Clerk?
No other speakers.
Seeing none, we will close the first public comment period. The next item is City Council and City Manager Comments and Reports. Dr. Ready.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I would just, no, there are a couple of things we wanted to brief you on. First, with regard to the Andaz project, the hotel, we understand that a new finance entity is part of the project, and they are finalizing those legalities, and what we understand is that construction will be commencing, hopefully within the next 30 to 60 days. And again, what they're anticipating is the end-of-the-year completion for the hotel. So again, that's just our general awareness, and we'll be working with a developer more closely over the coming weeks to refine and confirm that timeframe, so I just wanted to brief you on that.
Just a quick question on that, if I might. I know we had sent an enforcement letter previously, and what is the next deadlines for that project?
We sent a letter indicating the city's ability to provide enforcement mechanisms, because at the time the letter was sent, they hadn't met any timeframes. Staff is going to be looking into whether those timeframes have expired and whether we can start the same type of process that I mentioned earlier tonight.
Great, okay, thank you. Well, hopefully that is good news. You have other things under your City Manager Report, as I see.
Two other, Mayor, and I'd like Assistant City Manager Marcus Fuller, he's going to discuss two things. He's going to give everyone a downtown park update on the construction, and also, we need to brief you on an issue with the construction at the Wellwood Murray Library in the back patio construction. We just want to make you aware of an issue with the trees. So, Marcus, could you go ahead, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We just wanted to give an update to the public so they're aware of the status of the downtown park project. A lot of the work's been happening where you can't really see it. You can see that we had to demo underneath the garage to make way for the maintenance room, that's essentially the pump and equipment room for the big water feature that's going to be down below, and then we obviously demoed the old stairway that went to the I-Magnon store. So all that demolition was done. There's the construction down below of the maintenance room for the water feature and retaining walls, and more importantly, utilities, all of this fun stuff for the new police substation and restrooms, and the footings for the foundation for that new restroom facility. So, Mr. Mayor, it's still tracking on target for completion at the end of November. And then the other update is, as Dr. Ready mentioned, council awarded a construction contract recently for basically reconstructing the Wellwood Murray Library courtyard to return it back to its historic design. So there's a copy of that historic design. It was essentially turf with a single specimen olive tree. Here's photos. And then, in the late 80s, when the Plazaless Floors development next door was proposed, this is actually a field meeting with members of that development. You can see the courtyard, and it was pretty simple in design. Plazaless Floors removed all of the courtyard, planted some new trees, you see there, that was 1989. And, as you know, we went through a long process with the Historic Site Preservation Board and the Library Board to come up with a plan that returned this back to its original design, which is on the right, and you see it's all pavers with a single specimen tree, which is placed in front of the air conditioning equipment that will have a wall surround around it. However, to do that, we have to remove those trees which weren't original to the design planted in 1989. And those trees, over the 30 years, have grown, and you can see them here as seen over the building from Takwitz. So we just wanted to alert you, as our efforts to disclose to the public whenever we have projects that require removal of trees, that was the purpose for this disclosure and an update for you tonight. This project will be moving forward into construction, so we didn't want people surprised when they saw that these trees were being removed. It's intentional. They're also having problems in, causing problems with the foundation of the building because they're planted right up against the building, and so we wanted to make you aware of that fact as we move forward with that project. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank everyone that was associated with two different events, former Councilmember Roberts and former Mayor Moon for their work, along with Nancy Sinatra, for the Plaza event that was held two Sundays ago, that was very, very successful, and the Palm Springs Air Museum Gala that was held over this past weekend. Both incredible examples of the volunteer spirit in Palm Springs. This past weekend, I had an opportunity to attend, along with Patrick Talarico, our Sustainability Manager, a sustainability conference that was put on by the University of Southern California. Imagine me going to one of those. But we will both be speaking much more at the time that we get to the study session on sustainability regarding a number of incredibly good issues that were raised during the course of this conference. But one highlight that I would leave from the conference, transportation, more than anything else, is a key in California for us creating a more sustainable environment. And the new metric that is being looked at consistently as we try to improve our sustainability, how many car trips are being taken per day in your city? And how can you reduce the number of car trips per day? Goal should be somewhere between 7% and 10% reduction in the number of trips. And I would say that a number that came up during the conference, approximately 70% of car trips in a city such as Palm Springs are three miles or less. And I know where you're going. So Sunline met this week. One of the things that was raised, and this is still conversation, but 85% of Sunline riders are public transit-dependent, which means we're doing a significantly poor job of attracting individuals who have options to using public transit. And the challenge that is before public transit agencies is to increase the number of individuals who have choices as to how they use public transit. And one of the areas that some cities are starting to move towards, Seattle, King County, and Kansas City are two examples, is to make public transit free for all riders. And we have asked staff at Sunline to begin the process of review of looking at that. This can be a long process, but I think it is something that we should look at. And one of the things that we need to have on front and center is what can we do here in Palm Springs to increase the number of people who are voluntarily using public transit? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
I just wanted to remind everyone that the Black History Parade is this Saturday at 11:00 a.m. downtown. And there's a little festival with food and entertainment afterward in Francis Stevens Park. It's always a wonderful event, and so I encourage everyone to be there. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Mayor Protim Holstich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a few updates. First, I attended the C-VAG Coachella Valley Association of Governments Homeless Committee. We discussed a number of items, one being the idea, the consideration of legislation to have C-VAG do a sales tax measure. That went to my subcommittee, and I believe the mayor's going to give an update at the Executive Committee, so I'll let him talk about that. I also updated our region and our regional partners about our Palm Springs plans for the use of the $10 million for state funding to address homelessness. And we also got a report for our Coachella Valley Housing First program. I have a request, which we're requesting of all of the cities who participate in our Coachella Valley Association of Government, CV Housing First. We now have eight of the nine cities co-funding this program, and we're hoping for nine this year. So one request that we're making of each city is to just make an annual budget allocation of the $100,000 that we all contribute, each city does, to this pot of money to fund housing for people who are homeless, instead of every year, C-VAG coming and asking for it and it being unclear. It's really affected our ability to plan for the future when we don't know which cities are going to continue to fund. So if we could just make an annual budget allocation when we discuss our budget process. And then, we also sent out a call to action for each city to commit to finding one unit of bridge housing or crisis stabilization housing. So we're doubling the amount of crisis housing for folks. So right now, we have 12 units in the Coachella Valley, and we're looking for 24 units. And this has a high success rate, so 65% of clients in this housing successfully enter long-term housing and exit homelessness permanently. So there's a call to action. Only one city's responded, and it's not us, even though my name's on the letter. So the options for our city is we could lease, we could find to lease one existing affordable unit, housing unit to Path of Life and Kind. We could encourage owners or landlords to lease one unit. We could identify publicly-owned buildings or facilities that could be converted into a unit or a few. Or we could contribute the cost of maintaining one unit, which is $20,000 for the year. And it's money well spent, because it really gets people permanently out of homelessness. Clients only stay for 60 to 90 days, so we can serve a lot of people this way per year. So that is my request. Last update is, the mayor and I had our bimonthly meeting for the Business Retention Economic Development Meeting as the liaisons. We talked about our priorities for the next few meetings and decided with stakeholders, we have a number of the business community merchants and associations there, as well as residents, that the priorities would be establishing, considering establishing business districts for each district. So there's a lot of focus on downtown, but thinking about all the other business districts in Palm Springs and supporting local events that support our local economy. Those were our priorities. And then we talked about results of our uniquely Palm Springs, which has been highly successful, to get local people and kind of drive traffic to Palm Springs. Results of a tourism survey, of Buxton Analytics. We funded Buxton, which is a company that gives a ton of analytical data to companies and people who might be starting businesses. And we provided that to the community. And that's all. Oh, one more update. So Councilmember Garner and I are doing interviews for commissions. And so we need people from the community, all types of people. We really need your voices on our commissions. We're doing interviews. We have a lot more vacancies to fill. We're really looking for people who want to serve the city. So if you're interested, you can contact the city clerk. You can go online and submit an application. We'd really love to have you serve. And then one last thing, I promise, but it wasn't the last thing. We had a Census Outreach Committee meeting. And so we have a committee of residents and people involved to get out the word about the census. So I'd love if we could do an update for the community at a public presentation at one of the next upcoming meetings. We have county funding to do the census, but I think we might want to look as a council, if we want to allocate any funding, to get people engaged in the census, because a little bit of investment into the census will get us a lot more federal dollars into our communities. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Woods.
You know, one of the joys of being on this commission is that each of us represents the city to outside agencies, which are very important for our city, because they impact our city. And we just saw that tonight with the presentation by the Riverside County Transportation Commission. And I had the esteemed opportunity to put my transportation hat back on and attend the RCTC meeting, because Councilmember Middleton was unable to, and the C-VAG Transportation Committee meeting as well. And we got to do really exciting things like restructure huge bonds. And we got to do other things like find auditors. But that stuff, although boring, is really important to this city, because there's a funding stream that eventually comes to us through those agencies. And I just wanted to also talk a little bit about, Councilmember Middleton talked about ridership and making bus ridership free. One of the things that I've asked for in the update to our general plan is to really look at our bus stops and our bus system to make it much, much more appealable to the discretionary rider. So that's something in the general plan we've asked for. The other thing I asked for, just in the vehicle miles traveled, is for the bicycling to be much more of an opportunity here. And that's much more than bike lanes and bike lockers. But it's about providing showers and amenities for people who can ride to work or ride to an entity and then be able to be able to shower before they go to work. Lastly, I got to represent the city at CVCC, the Conservation, Coachella Valley Conservation. And we are continuing to buy up land in the Coachella Valley and to preserve it as conservation. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I have a few things. So the first is been mentioned. I want to sort of give an update where we are. So C-VAG, for those who don't know, the Coachella Valley Association of Governments, our supervisor, Supervisor Perez, had brought forward the idea of moving forward with legislation in Sacramento to allow C-VAG, if the member cities voted for it down the road, to put a sales tax measure on the ballot in 2022 for the entire Coachella Valley to fund homelessness, affordable housing, transportation, and related issues. And first, I really want to applaud the supervisor and his staff and C-VAG staff for trying to find ways to find revenue for these issues. And any revenue, of course, would stay in the Coachella Valley. And it's always been a challenge for us to get our fair share of funding from the state, from the county. So we appreciated that. And three of us were part of that in the last week. First, Mayor Protim Holstich at the Homelessness Committee, and then Councilmember Woods at Transportation, and me at Executive Committee. And that was a joint meeting with Transportation Executive Committee on Monday night. So first, I just want to share, because I think it's important for the council as we all move forward in these roles. I spoke first, just to say, the reason I couldn't support this at this time is we didn't have enough notice for us to have this discussion. And on major issues, like having C-VAG become able to be a taxing entity, to consider moving forward state legislation that would exempt the cap on local taxes, I felt we all needed to weigh in on that. And there was an item on the agenda which has been pulled based on what happened at Executive Committee. So what we did at Executive Committee, we really talked about it, and the overwhelming majority felt any measure needed to be focused on homelessness and affordable housing, and it shouldn't be broader than that, that there was truly a crisis in that area. And there are people living on the streets. We have people waiting with housing vouchers who can't get housing, and that that should be the focus of any effort. So what we did was we asked that a plan be worked on, primarily through the Homeless Committee, but with also housing experts as needed, and to come back in 90 days, looking at what are the goals of this revenue? And what are all the potential revenue sources, right? Let's not limit this discussion to a sales tax without thinking about the other things. Sales taxes can be regressive, and, you know, there are all kinds of other measures. Be parcel taxes. There could be recording fee taxes on transfers of property. There are also opportunities, as our governor has made homelessness and affordable housing his top priority, and there's funding available at the state level. You know, Palm Springs, over the last three years, has really led in saying, we're going to go get our own funding for these. You know, first, working with former Councilmember Fote to get the Desert Healthcare District to get engaged in homelessness and provide $2 million to the Coachella Valley for that. And then working with the council and Mayor Protim Holstich on our Assemblymember Chad Mays to be the only small city to get any funding from the state for homelessness in this last budget, and we received the $10 million grant. And so we want to look at all those and come back with a plan. But we made it really clear that this is urgent. And so we want a decision made and options brought back so it can be done by the end of this year, which still would allow for legislation to go to Sacramento as needed to make the 2022 ballot as originally planned. So I just want to give an update on why we're not doing that now. We'll have at least three councilmembers pretty engaged in that at C-VAG. But anything that happens, we really want to make sure our residents, our businesses, our stakeholders are involved in this discussion. And it's a long discussion, but it's very much needed. And so we're not against any idea. We just want more time to really think it through. I do want to follow up a little bit on homelessness. And one is regarding the transitional housing units. And I presume that's a request that we put something on the agenda to give direction on that. That said, when the governor recently announced that he was going to allow six, maybe seven counties, access to state trailers to provide housing for homeless, and Riverside County was one of them. So we reached out to our county supervisor, and it looks likely, because we're willing to, that we can get three of the 15 trailers Riverside County has for transitional housing. And likely, that could be at the boxing club or property next to the boxing club. And that's an ideal location, because we have services already there. So it doesn't mean we shouldn't do more, but I think we will go beyond the one unit. And the goal of this is really the transitional housing with services, because it does, as Mayor Protim Holstich discussed, it is what is working in the valley and has made such a tremendous difference. And we need more of those units desperately. So council does want to move forward with that, and will be moving forward with that. The other thing to announce is we are keeping the boxing club, which is now funded as of next month, unless we have some other entity help us entirely by the city, open at night. And it is now open during the day through money we received and applied for with C-VAG for Palm Springs to do really in-depth case management. It's not meant to be a place for people to hang out, but it's people who are really getting case management, getting services, getting enrolled in benefits, and a way to get them into transitional housing. So having this together is really going to make a difference. So that is now open. We've been working for a couple of months to get all the contracts signed. The Path of Life is now running that during the day. So just more things that we're doing, and really focusing on what we know works and what's worked in the past for us. Two other things I want to mention. I just want to just thank Mayor Protim Holstich for taking on the Census Outreach Committee and sharing that for us. Such an important thing, and I know how passionate you have been on that issue. And I think that, I take, was also a request to bring back discussion of funding for census from the city at the next meeting, which I think makes sense. And then people probably, most have, people are getting their first notices in the mail about Desert Community Energy, which is a new program that we are doing in the city. And it's a community choice aggregation program. They've existed for over a decade in other parts of the state, where the utility, in our case Edison, will still be getting the electricity to the customers, doing the repairs, maintaining the lines. That's about half the bill. And Desert Community Energy will be purchasing the power. Couple benefits for this. One is there's local control. So instead of money going to a utility and their shareholders, any money that's generated stays in a fund purely for sustainability purposes for ratepayers. So in the first year, it's estimated to bring in about $3.5 million. And as a reserve is built, that money can go, if there are rate spikes, to lower rates, to help pay for solar leases, to help businesses cover summer costs, so all kinds of things for the community. So it's money directly in the community. There are two options that everyone will have as far as the product. Edison has a 100% green power plan. DCE will have 100% also green, carbon-free power plan. DCEs will be about 4% less than Edison's on your bill. For folks who don't choose to be in the green power plan, it's, I think, about 50% carbon-free, and the rest is carbon-emitting. DCE, again, will be less expensive from the Edison plan. Difference for people, and you'll get more of this, and the city's also going to be doing a letter to lay it out differently, because the state law for the project has so much language it has to be in notices. I think it can be confusing, so we're going to do a more simple letter, because we're allowed to. If you're in the non-green Edison plan, and you go to the green DCE plan, rates will go up approximately 10%. So if people don't want that, they can select to go to the Desert Saver Plan, which will be less expensive than the Edison version. People can also choose to get their power from Edison, which will be the non-carbon power by default. And then the funds don't go into this sustainability fund. So there'll be a lot more on that. If people have solar, net metering will be the same. You'll be getting notices later. And for people who are in subsidized program known as CARE or FARA, their rates will stay the same automatically, and they'll be enrolled in the 100% carbon-free. So I just want to give people a little update, but we have a whole bunch of community forums. I don't have the dates in front of me, but later in the meeting, if the city manager can get them, we'll share the dates for the community meetings that we're having on this. And people can also reach out to me on email if they have any questions. I also chair that for the Joint Powers Authority with Cathedral City and Palm Desert. And that's all I have. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Next item is the consent calendar. I will entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar without the following items removed for separate discussions. Item C, F, I, L, M, N, and O. I have a motion by Mayor Protim Holstidge, seconded by Councilmember Garner.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. So, first item we have that's been pulled is item 1C. Can we get a staff report, please?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, the item you have before you is a report on our limited general plan update. What I'd like to do is just briefly talk about the schedule and the opportunities for members of the public to participate in the process. Relative to the limited update, we are covering three items or three chapters of the city's general plan: the land use element, the circulation element, and the housing element. Our timeline for the project is approximately 18 months. Staff has been working over the last several months with our consultant on doing some background work. We just had our first community workshop on Monday, and so, we're well into the process already. We anticipate that the final consideration of the updated elements will be in the spring of 2021. In terms of community outreach, we have three different ways for the public to participate. As I had just mentioned, we had the first of what will be three community workshops where we invited members of the public to come to the convention center and offer input on our priorities, our vision, and each of the individual elements. While that's a terrific way to get input from the public, what we found, especially through the CVRA process, is that sometimes we need to take the meetings to the public where they are. And so, for that reason, staff will be going out to individual neighborhoods as requested, also to civic groups to make the same presentation, provide surveys, and obtain input that way. Our first two neighborhood groups that we'll be meeting with is the Desert Highland Neighborhood, and then Demuth Park, and other neighborhoods as requested. A third way is through online input. We've established a separate webpage devoted directly to the general plan. I've given each of you business cards, which we're making available to members of the public with the address of the general plan webpage. And then on that page as well, you can take the same surveys that we've given to the community in the community meeting that we had on Monday. So, members of the public can also participate online as part of that process. So, those are the key elements of our general plan update. One of the questions that I've had from the city council is, what is your role in the process? As the legislative body, primarily, you'll be reviewing the recommendations of the Planning Commission, but what I might recommend is that about May or June into the process, we might want to have a study session or discussion item with the city council to give you a review of the input that we've received from the public thus far, and also give you the opportunity to provide direction to staff. That concludes my staff report to you, and again, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on the limited update process.
Any questions? So, the first community meeting, how many people came?
We had just under 100 people at that first community meeting.
Okay. Well, that's a good number. Great. So, and if we can, more we can do on the website and social media, that's really helpful, of course, and I know that's happening. So, but thank you for that. So, the next item is, oh, we need a motion. We, right? No, that's just a, yeah, we don't need a motion for that one. Right. Is 1F. Staff report, please.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, this is a request to approve an appropriation from the general fund unencumbered balance for document translation and interpreter services for fiscal years 2019 and '20, as well as 2020 and '21, and I'm available for questions.
Okay. Councilmember Middleton.
Yes, I asked this to be pulled, and it really was simply to highlight and say thank you to my colleagues and to the staff that we're moving forward not only with Spanish-language interpretation, but with ASL.
Yes. So, a motion by Mayor Protim Holstidge, seconded by Councilmember Garner.
Motion passes five to zero.
Great. Thank you. Next item is 1I. Staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, the item that you have before you is a request for approval of architectural review for a dispensary and lounge facility at 2500 North Palm Canyon Drive. As you'll recall, the applicant applied for a waiver from distance separation requirements back in November of 2019. At that time, the city council conditionally approved the waiver, subject to architectural review coming back to you. The applicant put together a package and has made a number of revisions since you first saw this in November of 2019. First of all, the lounge is no longer on the second floor of the building. Both the dispensary and lounge will be on the first floor of the building. They do have room to put an elevator in, but they will only have offices on the second floor, and don't anticipate having any members of the public on the second floor. Secondly, they aren't making any exterior changes to the building. However, because the lounge does have exterior windows that face North Palm Canyon, what they're proposing to use is a frosted glass, which will be in those windows facing North Palm Canyon. That is so that they will comply with state requirements, that the lounge is not visible from the public right-of-way. There are no other changes to the exterior of the building, and the signage has already been approved by the Architectural Advisory Committee. That concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about this application.
I have a couple of questions, just to address some of the questions that came from the audience. And I have all the answers, but I just wanted to put it in the public record. One is, they had to do an odor control plan, so there will be no odor whatsoever emanating from this business. Is that correct?
That is correct. As a lounge, they are required to have an odor control plan, and odor cannot be detectable from the exterior of the premises.
And this lounge is within an existing shopping center, correct?
Correct, it is.
And there is a large block wall, I believe, between it and the neighboring residential that was of concern for one of the residents?
Yes, there is.
Okay. Great. Thank you. The only thing that I'd really like to discuss is the frosted glass that you held up that will be along North Palm Canyon Drive. And I would just wonder if there isn't something a little more creative that we can do with that frosted glass wall? Although, I understand it is a bit repressed or depressed, excuse me, from or lower than Palm Canyon Drive. Even if it's, I'm just curious if there's something that the commission discussed as an opportunity versus just blanking it out as a blank wall?
Yeah. They didn't because of the specifics of the site. This is a little bit further removed from our primary pedestrian areas. And again, as you've already indicated, it's a little different than most of our commercial buildings in terms of its distance from the sidewalk and its location below the level of the sidewalk. You know, other things that we've looked at for other facilities have included having a wall that's approximately five feet behind the windows, giving the applicant the opportunity to display art in the windows. We've seen that in two other locations where that has been done. But again, that wasn't discussed by the Architectural Advisory Committee, but something that you as the council might recommend.
I don't know if my fellow councilmembers have any opinion on it, but...
I do. So, I did go there today, and I did sort of walk the sidewalk, and yeah, it is a little depressed, and the restaurant next to it has sort of what looks like painted windows or where the walls were put in, which we can talk about another time. But there is a residential building going up there, there's more hotels going up there, and people are going to walk that sidewalk more. So, you know, when this came to us, this didn't come up because the lounge was on the second floor. But I am a little concerned. And then looking at page 30, I just wanted to understand, if you look at the windows, they don't look like frosted glass. It looks like really nice sand with an ocean and clouds, which I haven't seen in Palm Springs yet. But I was curious, maybe a wave park or something that's coming? So, is that what the frosted glass is going to look like from the street and inside, or is that...
No, the sample that I have is this right here.
So, it's not this?
I didn't have that, no.
Okay. I was just curious. I would sort of prefer to see a wall back like we did in the last ones that came forward with some art, and it feels a little more welcoming to folks, because having that whole long stretch there being nonsee-through into businesses, I think is just not a warm feeling to, you know, entry area of Palm Springs. So, that was my concern on that. But we'll hear from other members of council, if there are any.
I agree. So, I would just like to hear maybe from the applicant, the feasibility of that, and if that's workable for you, or if you think that might work, you can come up and answer any questions. I don't know if staff has a recommendation there in terms of art versus the frosted glass.
We will take direction from city council either, I think, are valid options.
Thank you.
By the way, I'm sorry. By the way, the interior is gorgeous. We just want to make the exterior as gorgeous as the interior.
Yeah, yeah. We're going to do our best. Now, we are open. We can accomplish any of the needs that the city has. The only thing I would request is we've gone to AAC twice now. We've been on this lease for a very, very long time, paying every month. We've spent a lot of considerable amount of money, and any more delays to have to go back and do all, I mean, it's getting expensive. So, if we could continue to roll on forward, that would be nice.
Great. And Director Fag, we can do that tonight, right? Can we just sort of direct you to...
Absolutely.
...come up with some wall with art from the street, so it makes it more welcoming, probably good for the business as well, and...
Yes, you can add a condition to the approval stating that art shall be provided behind the windows on the Palm Canyon frontage, subject to the review and approval by staff.
Okay.
That sounds great.
So, I guess that would be a motion and a second?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion by Councilmember Woods, ah, second by Councilmember Middleton.
Motion passes five to zero.
Next is item 1L.
I think 1M.
Okay. I thought I had L pushed, but maybe not. No one picked L? Okay, 1M.
I pulled this item if I can, Mr. Mayor. So, I wanted to pull both where we have commissions requesting deviations from the 5:30 time for commission meetings that we set for all commissions. So, I read the staff report or the reasons for the airport commission, and I think that makes sense, but I just, I didn't want to let any of these go by, because I do think the council should take these really seriously. Otherwise, we're going to get 13 boards and commissions asking...
There's some other ones already.
...to change to their typical time. And, you know, we understand it's going to be a process of changing the culture and changing, you know, when people attend the meetings, and that just is a long-term culture change. So, we understand that it's burdensome now, but we believe that there will be more benefits later that are worth it. So, I just wanted, I don't know if there's a staff report or any comments here if the, if there's a recommendation to approve the airport commission's request to maintain their 8:00 AM start time.
So, Mayor and members of council, I would just note that we've put these here as receive and file. So, the idea was, council's direction to us was clear when we went to each board to revise their schedule. A couple of the boards did want to make the request. We told them that that request would need to be forwarded to council. So, it's receive and file. The presumption is, if you did have an interest in changing it, you would ask me to potentially agendize it for a future meeting. If it's not, it's just to receive and file, and their request is not granted. That being said, what we thought we would do is we added from the minutes, some of the members' discussion, we thought it was best coming from their description rather than us trying to paraphrase it. But again, our direction from council is clear, and so, it will all remain after 5:30 unless council specifically directs otherwise.
Thank you. That's helpful. And so, you agree with the airport commission's recommendation that it's in the best interest of the airport commission to maintain that time? Are there good reasons to do so? Since you...
Well, personally, myself, I don't know that it's a compelling reason. Certainly, you're going to have instances where some members may not be able to do it, and there will be a natural change of some members on some commissions. But again, that is outweighed against what council's greater policy interest is, and so, that's why we don't have a recommendation, because the arguments didn't seem compelling, at least to me, based on the council's policy interest.
I see. Sorry, so I misunderstood. So, this is receive and file to get their request, and then we can take action on it to approve if we want to. We would agendize it for the next meeting. I understand. Okay.
Yeah. And I've gotten a couple of other requests since people saw these, saying, you know, they want to see what we're doing, and then they may want to come forward. On that, I would note, having gone to some airport commission meetings, one of the things and I've heard from some folks is when they wanted to come talk about noise or when the early morning flights were starting, that they work, so they can't go to the airport commission at 8:00 in the morning. So, it's not just, this is not just for the commissioners, this is for the public in general. And so, I just want us to be conscious of that as we, any of these. The public being able to weigh in at a commission was one of the big, one of the major reasons we did this. Councilmember Middleton.
And if I could, just to finalize your question on the Village Fest, now, again, I wouldn't want to speak for them. That did seem to be a little bit more compelling on the vendors who come in the afternoon. So, my comments were more for the airport commission. I would not have as strong of opinion with Village Fest, because I'm just not as familiar with their schedule.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Both of these caught my attention as well. I think our desire to move to 5:30 is very appropriate and something that it does need to be compelling. With the airport commission, I am somewhat persuaded, this is a regional body, and membership on the airport commission, the majority are from Palm Springs, but we have individuals from throughout the Coachella Valley. Other regional bodies that meet, such as the various CVAG committees, meet during the course of the business day. And so, this with the airport commission, I think they're being consistent with that. And I would note that at least one of the members of the airport commission is an elected official who would not be able to attend his own bodies' meetings if they took place at 5:30 on the particular day of the week. I think we need to have some standards around any exceptions that we would make, and I would certainly be open to consideration of when we are talking about regional bodies and when we are talking about entities that primarily deal with the business community, that that be something that we are open to. I would, though, particularly with reference to what the mayor brought up, the airport commission has a very profound effect on the quality of life of people here in Palm Springs, and there need to be meetings at, sometimes during the course of the year, that take place at 5:30 or later so that the residents who are affected by the airport have a clear opportunity to attend. Those could be special meetings, but I think there does need to be at least some meetings during the year that do not take place at 8:00 o'clock in the morning.
And just a little follow-up. I mean, while there is, you know, most of the folks I do not believe are elected officials. So, you know, again, people who work or have certain jobs can't be there from 8:00 to 10:00 on a weekday, and I think, you know, just like, CVAG's a little different. We're elected representatives doing our elected jobs, and just among us, we accommodate people's schedules. And so, if the airport commission does go to 5:30, it doesn't need to be on, you know, the second Wednesday of the month when they have a council meeting. It could be on a Thursday, or Monday, or Tuesday. So, and I like the idea of, of course, having something in the evening, but when you start, no one will know. Unless we standardize this and have a regular process where people know commission meetings are at a certain time, people won't know that twice a year, the meeting's at 5:30 when it's at 8:00 AM the rest of the time. It's hard enough to get notice out. It's hard enough to get notice out. So, I'm not inclined at this point, but obviously, it's up to council, so.
I agree. I'm also not inclined to make an exception now because I think if we do, we'll get just a snowball of a lot of requests from all our boards and commissions. I think we can try this and see and, and map out how many people are participating and who's participating, and then reassess it from there if we need to.
Anyone else?
Can I just, for those who might want to participate, Dr. Reddy, is the, when, where do they meet? Where does the airport commission meet?
At the conference room of the airport on the second floor.
And can anybody who wants to attend walk into the airport and go to the second floor and attend these meetings? Do they have to go through security?
Yes. No, it's, it's on the non-secure side.
Okay, thank you.
And we also did at our last meeting, I think it was, say that commissions can wait until July 1st, so if someone doesn't want to serve in the evening, you know, they can finish out this fiscal year as well. And I know later on, we are talking about ways, more ways to get people engaged, whether there are childcare issues, whether there's parking allowances, et cetera, et cetera. So, that's another issue, separate from this, but that we can discuss as well. Okay. So, is there any motion to do anything? Councilmember Carter?
I would like to talk about this more in depth at, at some point, though. Especially, I would like to see which commissions are having issues and why, and just find out more in general.
No, I agree. I think, and hopefully, we'll talk more about that later, but also, how we're going to really do a full-on education of the community about when the meetings are and, you know, how we're going to maximize people's ability to have input. Okay. If there is no motion, we will go on to the next one, which is one N, I believe. I don't know if we need another staff report. It's a request from Village Fest. Is there a motion on that? Or anyone wants to speak?
I, I'm the one who brought this one up, and the notes that we have here speak to traffic patterns and the convenience of those who are trying to attend the meetings. And in comparison to the airport commission, I was not, I did not find this compelling. And so, if, if all we are talking about is, is traffic issues, I don't think that's going to reach the bar of a compelling reason for changing the meeting. But I'm open to if there's something else that they want to bring forward.
Okay. Anyone else? If there's no motion, we'll move on to the next one, which is one O.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This item requests your consideration to adopt a resolution that would formally implement time limits for public parking at the City Hall parking lots. As I've explained in the staff report, I think we're all aware that parking can be a challenge here, and we're seeing more and more use of the parking lot by non-city employees or not, people not doing business here at the city or visiting the dog park. As we evaluated our options, we have recommended three hours as it would, it would prevent someone who's perhaps working at an adjoining building off-site from moving their car at lunch if they work a traditional eight-hour day. So, having anything longer than three hours would likely not reap the benefits of what we're trying to accomplish here, which is freeing up parking for our employees and those that are visiting the dog park and doing business at City Hall. Employees would be exempt, and, and they do get employee decals or permits, but this would make it better and more efficient for code, or our parking enforcement to regulate and cite those that don't have an employee permit if they're parking longer than three hours. I did hear the comment from, from a member of the public. I think we can come up with some solutions with people that are here for an extended period of time with some sort of temporary permit. I think there's ways around that for people that are doing business here at the city longer than three hours. And the suggestion, again, was that it was 8:00 to 6:00 PM. As we know, like, for tonight, as an example, some people might be parked here longer than three hours. So, the time limits would be Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 6:00. And we would continue to have the no parking from midnight to 6:00 AM. I've also identified some suggestions for freeing up some additional on-street parking that's identified in the staff report. So, with that, if there's any questions, I'll turn it over to you.
Councilmember Middleton.
Okay. I want to thank Mr. Fuller. Mr. Henrichson raised exactly the example I was going to raise. Perhaps as we move to all of our meetings taking place at 5:30 or later, we will have far fewer instances of people who are here for meetings at City Hall that will be here for longer than three hours. But I personally, before I was on city council, had any number of days that I was here far more than three hours, and wouldn't have taken a parking ticket as a proper thank you at the end of
Yes.
...that day. So, we need to have a system so that individuals who are here for legitimate reasons at City Hall conducting business and frequently volunteering can get a one-day permit.
Yeah. So, thank you for this. Also, just to note, and I know we put signs up, but we do see people who either live nearby or work in those buildings, both overnight, but off, because you often see it if you get here early in the morning, just park and use the electric parking chargers so no one else gets to use them. So, how we add that in with the contract on parking enforcement is something we should look at. Mayor Protim Houstich.
Thank you. Have we reached out to the businesses that we think employees are using our parking lot? Because I'm not a big fan of parking permit systems because I think the administrative burden is high and it's costly, and it just creates a whole new regulatory system for us, which I'm open to this and I support it. But I'm just wondering if we could also just reach out to the businesses and ask them if their employee, you know, notify them that we're doing this, that we're requesting that they not park there, provide alternative parking options, just directly address it as opposed to just doing this on our own. Thanks.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Woods? Oh, you want to say something first? And a second by Mayor Protim Houstich. Go ahead.
No, I just wanted to move the staff recommendation with the caveat that we come up with a system for somebody who's here longer than three hours.
Okay. So, a motion and a second?
Motion passes, five to zero.
Wow, we're done with the consent calendar. People could continue, and do people need a quick bio break? Yeah, okay. So, we'll take a short, no more than 10-minute, try and be a little quicker recess. Thank you.[1108.71]
It's good when there are less. Okay, the next item is 3A, staff report, please.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. The item before you is Introduction of an Ordinance, Amending the City's Municipal Code Regarding Animals, as well as a Resolution dealing with animal licensing fees. The item contains two items, as I mentioned. One is an ordinance, the second is a resolution. I'll take each of them in kind. The ordinance does two things. One is it amends the municipal code provisions dealing with the ability to redeem an animal after it has been adopted. So state law requires that an animal shelter hold an animal that has been impounded or found for a minimum of four days, not including the day of impoundment. Thereafter, the animal shelter can adopt the animal out. The city's current municipal code contains a 30-day waiting period after that dog, animal, has been adopted out that would allow the original owner to redeem that dog or cat even after it has been adopted out. This proposal would remove that 30-day period, so it would basically default to the state law of four days plus the day of impoundment. The second thing that this ordinance does is it establishes a regulatory program for the regulation of breeding of dogs and cats within the city. It doesn't follow the previous ordinance's attempt to completely ban it, but instead it regulates it. And it regulates it by allowing one breeding, in other words, one litter per year, per 12-month period. And it also requires residents who own the animals to get a permit from the city. If a breeding occurs without a permit, it provides an opportunity for a cure by the owners of the animal to come in and get the permit after the fact. However, if more than one breeding in a 12-month period occurs, or if that animal owner doesn't obtain the permit, the city is authorized to impose fines as provided for in the ordinance. The second item that's part of this staff report is a resolution that establishes and increases certain fees that are collected by the Friends of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter in their efforts to regulate animal control measures, including licensing and vaccinations. It establishes some new fees, and it updates other fees. We've heard several comments from members of the public tonight, and so that completes my presentation. I'm certainly available to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Just one thing, since I was asked this during the break, just, and correct me if I don't say it right. So this is first reading, so if it passes close to what it is on first reading, then it will come back on our next council meeting for second reading to be formally adopted.
Correct.
If there are significant changes, then it would come back with those changes for another first reading at our next council meeting.
And then a second reading after that, yes.
After that, okay, thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Holstich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought I would start, since I have been the liaison to the animal shelter for the last two or so years, and I just wanted to give some context as a sort of subcommittee report until, you know, before people have questions and comments. Initially, as you remember, we brought a few options to the City Council in July of 2018, primarily looking at a total ban of backyard breeding. We heard from the AKC, and I met with the Palm Springs Kennel Club. After that, we heard a lot of concerns about a total ban, and so we worked with the animal shelter to bring forward a compromise, essentially a compromise position, which would be to limit breeding in this way, as you see in the proposed ordinance. We had talked a lot about how could we do a ban that would exempt legitimate breeders or reputable breeders? How could we do that, not just limit it to the AKC, since there are, I have a poodle mix, because my husband's allergic, so, right, if people want some sort of mix that isn't actually licensed by the AKC, how would we still legislate that type of exemption? And we just had a really hard time working with the city attorney to define that. And so we struggled with how to define reputable breeders, how to exempt some folks and not others, if that really is the policy that we want, or if we just want to do across the board. So this was the policy proposed by the animal shelter for backyard breeding, or for breeding in general, is to have a permit process and to limit it to one time per year. So we did receive, we heard public comment from so many of you. We did receive comments that I think we can address. I have a few questions, but I just wanted to give that context before we hear from everyone else, and then I'll ask my questions as well.
Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few questions, and is Dr. Nagy still in the audience? Then perhaps Mr. Armstrong will be able to help. One of the comments that we received talked about occasions where there would be a medical reason why it would be appropriate for a dog to be bred a second time within 12 months. And I'm assuming that is a very unusual set of circumstances. Can you help a layperson understand what that might be and how it would work?
No, I actually, we're, spay neuter is obviously our main objective at the shelter. So for us, no, there's never a reason for an animal medically to be bred a second time or after the first time, or the first time to begin with. So that's not something that I can answer from a veterinarian's perspective, unfortunately.
All right, okay. And is, are you able to answer why it is appropriate that a male dog not be allowed to breed more than once a year?
Can you ask that question one more time, please?
As this is written, it prohibits a female dog from having a litter more than once in 12 months, but also bans a male dog from being made available for breeding purposes more than once a year. And it's a little easier to wrap my head around the first restriction than the second.
I cannot verify that there's a medical reason to do that or not do that. I would suggest that overpopulation is what we address with limiting an animal's ability to breed more than once.
All right.
A male animal, so.
Okay, thank you. And this is more a question for staff. One of the speakers expressed very serious concerns about the circumstances under which, as a breeder, individuals would have an opportunity to come onto their property. So can staff review for us, what would be the circumstances that would create an opportunity for someone to come onto a breeder's property? And what would be the opportunities that the owner of that residence would have to object to?
Right.
An inspection?
Right. So under constitutional principles, if the city and the animal control officers became aware or had reasonable suspicion that there was a violation of this ordinance, they would have to either obtain the consent of the occupants of the residence, or they would have to go to court and get an inspection warrant. They could not just go onto the property and conduct an inspection without one of those two.
And no one from the community would have the opportunity to come on to anyone's property without a permit? All right, thank you.
You, Councilmember Witz.
Some questions of staff. The fees that are collected, are those collected by the animal shelter or by the city?
The shelter.
They're collected by the shelter. So when a city has a fee, the city can charge a fee that basically recoups the cost of the staff time, and does the shelter under the same type of guidelines?
Actually, we set the fees, but when we contracted with the Friends to do the operations, we allowed them to take that program over and receive the revenues. So the amount arguably is set to cover the service.
Okay, okay. And, you know, traditionally in the city, if you have a home occupation, you have to have a permit to have a home occupation. My assumption is we've never had a home occupation permit requirement for dog breeding?
A home, I'm sorry.
Normally, if you have a home business, because we're talking about breeding in your private home in the backyard, we have a permit that you need to have in order to have that home business, called a home occupation business. I take it we've never had such a permit for dog breeding?
Yeah.
And that this is basically putting such a permit in place?
So the business license, in essence?
The business license, yes.
And this would basically be that type of a home occupation permit for this particular activity?
Thank you.
So following up, since I had a similar question. So currently, if you do have a business, whatever it is, don't you need to have a business license, a home business license? It's not only like certain types of business, I presume it's any kind of business?
Yes.
Okay, so this is in addition to that, or just making it even clearer that people who aren't getting a license are violating the rules?
This would be in addition to a business license.
So they still need that?
Correct.
Okay, and do we know how many people have business licenses for animal breeding?
Actually, the finance director is saying, we don't think we have any. So in essence, that's one that it isn't, it may not be regulated that way, so we need to check on that, but Nancy, can you comment on that, please? If you know, you may have to.
That we have any breeding licenses at this time, but it would be beneficial if they came in and got a business license and a home occupancy where they would have to have an inspection done. But I could follow up and let you know if we do have any, and if we do, how many that would be.
Okay, but currently, that is required, just, people may not be doing it or not know that they need to do that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Because I know when I talk to the Kennel Club of Palm Springs, I characterize this as not a business for profit, they do it for different reasons, but I was just wondering legally what we count as a business that we would require a business license? Would breeding activities for profit or for sale of animals be included in a business? What about breeding for showing animals?
I would consider that still part of a business.
Okay, thank you.
You're done?
I'm done, sorry.
Yeah, well, we're done. Comments, anyone else? I'll go with just one thing, and I understand the 30 days being a very long period of time compared to state law, but maybe someone from the animal shelter, or, you know, some people say, shouldn't it be at least like a week or a little bit longer than four days? A week, four days seemed short from the perspective of, you know, you have a dog sitter, you're away, the dog, you know, goes in hiding, whatever, you know, gets lost, not, yes, microchips are more common, but they're not required, so maybe just comment on what your thoughts are, and if it was a week or 10 days? And also, the ordinance doesn't sort of set forth, it says, you know, make reasonable efforts to contact the pet owner, but it doesn't say what those are. And so those being undefined left me a little hesitant on that, so if maybe you can address that, would be appreciated.
You're right that it is undefined in the ordinance, I agree. Obviously, at the shelter, we do have sort of different approaches, a different policy in place. So when an animal comes to the shelter and it is unidentifiable, doesn't have a tag or a microchip or any of those things, we will hold the animal for five days, a minimum of five days, before making it available for adoption. If it comes in with identification, it's a minimum of 10 days that will hold the animal before it's made available for adoption, and usually it's longer because we have to do medical and spay neuter and things like that. So I agree that it's not as defined as it probably could be.
Okay, and so going more than four days is sort of in the range you're already in anyway?
Yes.
So that five to 10-day range seems fine?
Five to 10-day, yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Middleton.
Right. First, just, not that there's any conflict, but my wife has for many years been a volunteer at the animal shelter, and every Monday works with the dogs that are going through spaying and neutering. And she largely finds that most dogs were much better patients than the humans that she dealt with for 30 years. But this is a tough one, and one of the things that I want to try to get across is I believe that we heard this evening from a large number of people with some very strongly different opinions, and that both groups that we have here in this room love the dogs and the cats personal worth to the care of the animals that they are working with. And so, that sense of respect among those who work primarily with breeds that are pure bred and those who work with animals that are not, there needs to be mutual respect. We both, regardless of the type of animal that we choose to work with, know the abuse that takes place and have a vested interest in making sure that we reduce the amount of suffering that takes place. Like former councilmember Foote, we have a rescue dog in our home. He's been there for seven years. When he came to the animal shelter, he had been beaten, abused, starved, and was at death's door. And it was the animal shelter that brought him back to life. But seven years later, it still takes a minimum of 24 hours for him to be around you before he will stop barking and carrying on and crying. Such was the nature of the abuse. I think what has been put forward here is an appropriate set of steps to try to make sure that we reduce in Palm Springs the number of instances of animal abuse. And we all have to recognize that it is taking place. I would support a little bit longer period of time than four days. I would suggest two weeks that someone could come and redeem an animal. But I would also give to the animal shelter the opportunity to intervene in any instance where they believe there has been abuse of the animal or would be abuse of the dog or cat if they were returned to the homeowner. I'm going to support this measure, and I hope that we can move forward and have more conversation taking place between all of us who love our animals and understand there's a reason why they are our best friend.
I agree, I support this ordinance. Personally, I support a total ban on backyard breeding, possibly with an exception for reputable breeders. I find that that's really hard to legislate around, and so that this is a good compromise position that hopefully takes into account everyone. We did get some comments from the Kennel Club of Palm Springs. I forwarded those to the city attorney. I'd be happy to meet, I know councilmember Garner is the new liaison to the animal shelter, but I'd be happy to meet with anyone who wants to before the second reading to work on this. But I think that we can address a lot of those questions. We talked about the home inspections, which people would be protected from and would be a normal process. I do agree that the ordinance should limit the time interval for requested information on previous litter, bread. I mean, we could, people were asking, is it 40 years or 30 years? I assume it might be per animal, or, you know, dogs live 15, 20 years, so, but we could limit that in some way, so it's not so expansive. I think we clarified on the record females and male litters. And people can ask any questions and go through that, but just looking at that list there. But I think for the breeding, this is a good compromise position, meeting with all the stakeholders. I think we all care about our animals, we all love our pets and dogs and cats, and we just want what's best for them. And working with the animal shelter, I mean, we've seen so many cases. I mean, having 500 puppies in the city of Palm Springs every year, those are the only ones that make it to us. We don't know what happens to all those other dogs and cats. I've personally seen people selling six-week-old, four-week-old puppies at our dog park here in the city of Palm Springs, too young. There's just too many animals that are being abused and not having good outcomes in our city, and we can do something about it. And I think we should stand up and protect animals. So I support this ordinance and this change.
Councilmember Garner?
So I'd actually, in regard to the licensing fees, I'm not comfortable with moving forward with that right now. I'd like to have more discussion on that and bring it back at a later date, just so that we can get a little bit more input and kind of decide on goals for that process. As far as the ordinance go, the other ordinance goes, I do want to make sure that we are clearing up that timeframe, that four days, because I know there is a lot of things that go into it before that even really starts. And so I think if we can just make that very clear, so that everyone understands, that would be much better. Because the first time that I saw that as well, I thought, four days? No way? But it's really, like you said, almost two weeks when it comes down to it, that the animal is at the shelter. So there's a lot of time. And the animal shelter spends a lot of time looking for owners of any pet, any animal that comes into the shelter. And they scour Craigslist, they look on Facebook, they do a lot. So I think we, as long as we clarify that, so that everyone is aware, I think that's And I think that's my two big concerns.
I'm happy to move forward with the, both of these. If you have, if you're a graphic artist and you have a business in your home, you need a license in the city of Palm Springs. And I don't think animal breeding is any different than that. And I think it slipped through the cracks at some point. And I think the impact of animal breeding versus somebody who runs a graphic design firm out of their home is probably more impactful. So I would be in support of the staff recommendation.
Do you have something else, or otherwise I have a? Oh. Yeah, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. You know, the next council meeting, I mean, it's clear this will come to second reading, is three weeks from now because of a change in schedule. So I appreciate the effort to reach out and really work with some of the reputable breeders who are here, and if there are tweaks that need to be made that make sense, to be able to bring those back. I was going to also raise the fee issue. I'd really like a little more time on the fees. I get it, totally, but I worry that, one, a lot of people don't even know these fees exist, or that they need a license. And we don't want to be in a situation where, you know, we're upping fees for people who can't afford them. And, so I just want to make sure we get a little more information on that. I mean, we just got something, like going into closed session with comparison chart, which I appreciate, but I didn't really have time to review it and think about it. The other parts, I'm fine moving forward with. So, given sort of the different timing we discussed in, on how long, I know you, councilmember Middleton, mentioned 14 days, I was thinking a little less, but from the perspective of the animal shelter, if we start counting from, you know, the date an animal gets to the shelter, right? Is two weeks too long? And if you can come up, maybe, so we can try and find a date that, what works? And also, for second reading, maybe if you could send to the city attorney the steps you take, so we can put in, so people know that actually, there's real effort. And we all, we know there's real effort, but I don't, I want to make sure people know what that is, because I think it'll help alleviate some of the concerns we heard.
Okay. We can definitely do that.
Great.
Also, I think there is some confusion about the timing. So the ordinance states that people have within 30 days of adoption. So if an animal comes to our shelter, let's say it's 10 days until it's available to the public, and then it stays at our shelter for six months, maybe even a year, then, and then it's adopted, that original owner still can go and claim that animal.
Is that state law?
Yeah. That's how the ordinance currently is written.
Oh, that's ours?
Yes. So that's the problem that we're trying to address, is that it's actually, the problem is that it's from time of adoption. So I think we can be somewhat flexible as far as how long an animal stays at our shelter until it's emancipated, meaning available for adoption. The issue is from adoption on.
Yeah. No, I get, if there's a long enough period there, once that's run, if the dog's adopted, it's adopted. I would support that fully. So what do you think is the right amount of time?
I mean, I feel like the way we have it now, with five days, five days if an animal has no identification, and 10 days if it does not. But the reason for that is actually, there's other reasons. Animals get sick in the shelter, they're exposed to, the shelter, no matter how much hard work we do, it's, the place that an animal is most vulnerable. So we want to limit its time in our shelter for its health and well-being, and that's something that we balance all the time, which is why we don't want to go too far. And also, as far as population and census, the longer an animal's in there, the more room they take, it's just very difficult when the shelter fills up with animals that are waiting.
I'm more in the line of like 10 days from when the animal arrives, either way, just because, you know, if an animal did have a collar and for some reason, someone took it off, I'm just concerned with someone being away and not knowing, I think. But I think once that 10-day period, if everyone's good with that number, is done, there's nothing past that. If that would work for everyone, does that seem workable? Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. And we can talk between now and then, if there are issues that you think of, of course.
Thank you.
Okay. There's nothing else?
Mayor, if I could, I would just make one note, that within about 30 days, the, Aaron in information technology has indicated that they'll be able to do online registrations, so you won't no longer have to go into the animal shelter to get your annual permit.
Good.
Thank, can I speak?
Yeah, please.
Sorry. I didn't push my button. Thank you. That was what I was going to ask, thank you for raising that. I think we definitely have a licensing problem in the city of Palm Springs, and so only 18% of our pets are licensed that we know about, based on estimates. We have a lot of pets here. So I think getting the word, when we bring this back and we have a full discussion about fees, we can think about, I know the animal shelter has a 2020 vision and plan to spread the word and get people licensed, but we can talk about the ways that the city can do that, we can move it on, we'll move it online within 30 days or so, it sounds like, and then other ways that we can get more and more people licensed, which I think solves a lot of that problem. I did want to note, and when we talk about it next time, I'm not sure if a renewal late fee makes sense, because I think it'll deter people from renewing, especially if people can just fly under their radar. So we should balance and assess what's going to incentivize people to license their pets versus not, and all the policies that we could promote to get there in partnership with the animal shelter.
Great. Do we have a motion?
And the remaining issue was the three years of record-keeping. What's the council's pleasure of doing that? Is it five years, seven years? The record-keeping, you had mentioned, there were some comments from the-
I think the question was how far back.
Right.
Right.
Currently, the proposed ordinance says records need to be kept for three years from the date of transfer. Is that, okay.
Okay.
Can I get clarification on what the motion is?
Yeah. I was just going to say, make sure Anthony had it, or Jeff?
I understand it, it would be just the introduction of the ordinance, not the resolution.
And modifying it to be 10 days with or without ID for the waiting period.
Moving forward on the fees.
And that, the fees would just, we could do in one vote, right?
Correct.
Resolution at the next meeting when we do this. So that gives us time to review that. Okay? Okay?
Motion passes, five to zero.
We will next move to what was in here, item 5A, staff report, please. I think city attorney.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, the item before you is consideration of two different types of agreements. The first is a community workforce agreement, and the second is a labor peace agreement. At the January 13, 2020 Business Retention Subcommittee, the Subcommittee considered testimony from various stakeholders on both a community workforce agreement and a labor peace agreement, and recommended that the city council hold a discussion item on these two types of agreements. So by way of background, a community workforce agreement is really a type of project labor agreement. Project labor agreement is a pre-hire collective bargaining agreement between the owner of a project and one or more labor organizations. It establishes the terms and conditions of employment for either a specific construction project or a class of projects. A community workforce agreement is a type of project labor agreement, but that contains certain terms and provisions that establish or further various social welfare goals that the owner might have in mind. A labor peace agreement, on the other hand, at least as defined by California cannabis law, is defined as an agreement between a cannabis licensee and a bona fide labor organization that prohibits the labor organizations and members from engaging in picketing, work stoppages, boycotts, and other economic interference. It then requires a cannabis owner to agree not to disrupt efforts by the bona fide labor organization. So it doesn't necessarily specify that union labor has to be used, but it certainly fosters and encourages organization efforts. So this staff report will address the social, fiscal, and legal issues that are involved. The social aspects of a community workforce agreement are laid out in the staff report. Staff has researched and identified approximately 12 different types of community workforce agreements that contain various community benefits, whether it's hiring veterans, local residents, small businesses, minority, women-owned businesses, residents of low-income neighborhoods, certain ZIP codes, encouraging apprenticeship programs, hiring from certain neighborhoods, hiring workers with histories of incarceration or receipt of public assistance. Those are the various types of social welfare benefits that a community workforce agreement can foster. In terms of the fiscal impacts, the fiscal impacts is usually one of the largest kinds of bones of contention with project labor agreements and community workforce agreements. As the staff report indicates, there's conflicting evidence in terms of the costs of entering into community workforce agreements. There are some studies that indicate that the costs increase, there are some studies that indicate the costs are actually less. Most proponents of community workforce agreements will respond that irrespective of the costs, there's the community benefits and the social benefits of the community workforce agreements are what are to be attained and therefore outweigh any potential cost impacts to the owner. And then finally, with regard to the legal aspects, courts have upheld both project labor agreements and community workforce agreements when the owner, such as a city, is acting in a proprietary capacity as opposed to a regulatory capacity. So when we are acting as an owner, or when we are contributing funds to a particular project that's otherwise private, courts will uphold the city's ability to enter into those community workforce agreements. So the question for the city council really is, what types of community benefits is the city council interested in trying to attain? Should it choose to move forward with a community workforce agreement? And then what category of projects does the city council want to apply community workforce agreements? Most public agencies define it by either certain projects that are funded maybe by a certain bond issuance, or the fiscal size of the project in terms of the cost of the project, should the council want to do that. And the staff report indicates various cities and public agencies that have established different thresholds. The second type of agreement, as I mentioned, is labor peace agreement. It sets out the general parameters of workplace environments under which unionization can be fostered, though it doesn't necessarily require unionization. Under state cannabis law, those cannabis businesses that have 20 or more employees are required to either enter into a labor peace agreement or certify that they will once they start employing 20 or more employees. Other- Other cities have recently lowered that number. The city of Cathedral City adopted an ordinance recently lowering that number to 10. City of Pomona adopted an ordinance lowering that number to five. And so the question before the city council is, does the city council wish to follow the lead of either of those two cities or establish another number to apply labor peace agreements to cannabis businesses within the city? That completes my staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. And Mayor Protim Holstich and I have been working on this through both business retention, economic development, and when we sort of had a legal subcommittee as well, and have had meetings on it. So one question just for staff, and I appreciate Marcus reaching out to some contractors who do business with the city to get their input. Did you hear any negative comments from any of the contractors you reached out on this?
I, I haven't directly received any, other than some of the emails, but I don't believe those were from any contractors.
Contractors that we work with, okay. And just the city manager, because at our business retention meeting, when we discussed this a month ago, we had a number of the cannabis businesses, and I know we were going to send note to outreach so they knew this was on, that happened?
Yes, that, that did happen.
Okay, I just wanted to check on that. Thank you. I assumed it did. So why don't we take these one at a time, because I think they're different agreements? And so, so the reason we wanted to bring forward this discussion about community workforce agreements instead of project labor agreements is because we want to really see the community benefits. I think what's sort of clear, unlike maybe Los Angeles and New York City, having 45% of the jobs go to people who live in Palm Springs is not likely, given population differences. So these jobs are really going to be more regional, which is also a great thing, but we really wanted to think about some of the community benefits for our residents in this, and that's, I really appreciate the city attorney doing this. The closest population is probably the city of Perez, which, Perez, which is what, 65,000 people, I think, just to give us a sense. And what they did, and what we discussed, was, you know, hiring starts with Palm Springs zip codes and then spreads out to neighboring cities with a focus in the Coachella Valley. So I thought, we thought that was important. Of course, we really all like the disadvantaged workers, the formerly incarcerated veterans, so we, we were really interested in looking at those. I know some cities, you know, New York has a certain number of spots and apprenticeship slots. We're a small city, but we do have programs with our high schools, so how we could work with our, you know, especially high schools with Palm Springs and Coachella Valley students, Palm Springs Unified, to help encourage programs in those schools, so people are trained. Because one of the real benefits for the city, in addition to people making good wages and not having to commute and contribute to our climate crisis by driving three hours and the impact on their lives, is to help our students and, you know, and also, of course, better projects. So a lot of benefits to these, and that's, I think, why we decided this really should be a full council discussion, instead of bringing something forward as a ironclad proposal. So anything you want to add just prior discussion? Okay, council member Middleton.
Well, I think you started to answer the question I had, which was, how did we want to define the community when it came to community workforce agreements? Because as I go through the various examples, there are a lot of different ways that localities have defined that community. The Perez example is, is perhaps an appropriate starting point, but I think we need to be very cognizant that the workforce here in the Coachella Valley is across the Coachella Valley, and given the cost of housing in Palm Springs, many of the individuals who may have grown up in Palm Springs have had to move to Cathedral City or Desert Hot Springs or Coachella because they could not afford housing here in Palm Springs, and there's still very much a family connection within this community, so. But all of that, I am really pleased that this is coming before us, and I will be voting to support this with as much enthusiasm as I have with anything else. As the child of a lifelong ironworker, it is a pleasure to support union labor.
Great, thank you. Maybe we can have Mr. Perez, who runs the building trades, just a question or two on this. And thank you for hanging in here with us tonight. You learned a lot about dogs and cats, and good stuff. And I know we talked about this in our last public meeting with the business retention and economic development, and the challenge of how you do the apprenticeship slots. So what can you sort of suggest, knowing that that's something we want, right, or, and working with our schools, and given, you know, we're doing something that's going to help workers throughout probably the county, not just the Coachella Valley, which is a great thing to do, and I think thrilled to do it, but the real benefit for our residents, and especially the students, the people coming up, who can get in those programs that are really amazing, having seen some of them are great. And so what, what can we do to help make that happen?
I think along the apprenticeship lines is just to make sure that we can partner with the city and also nonprofits or other organizations within the city and the surrounding communities to do the outreach in some of these communities where they may not live in a culture where they're already construction workers. They, they, they don't really understand what the opportunities are. So we've been addressing this generally by using our national curriculum that was developed about five years ago, it's multi-craft core curriculum. It's, you'll hear a lot about MC3. So it's 120 or 140 hours course that is apprentice, apprenticeship readiness program, and it's sort of designed to be able to go into communities and talk to young people, or even adults, to explain to them what all those different craft opportunities are, and how each different craft apprenticeship works. It gives them an overall primer, there's no specific trade training involved, but that has allowed us to get into areas where young people have not been aware of the, of the really terrific occupations in, in the construction industry, and more importantly, how to get in there, what the prerequisites are, and how you get into those programs, and what to expect once you get there so that you can succeed. So that's the, the tack we, we would most likely want to take is, and we can sort of dovetail that in with partnerships through the K-12s. We have two of them at K-12s right now, currently, they're, they were statewide pilot programs, have been going for five years now. One at Norda Vista High School in Riverside, and one at Royal Valley at San Bernardino Unified School District. They were both core academies, and they incorporated the MC3 into those. So those students now, coming out of those programs, are prepared for the college pathway and concurrently prepared to go to, to the craft apprenticeships, should they choose to do that. So we like that option. Not everybody's going to go to college, not everybody's going to go to the trades, but at least they have viable options, and they have a really good understanding of what those opportunities are. That would be my best.
Uh huh, okay, thank you. Anyone else have questions for Mr. Perez when he's up? Okay, thank you for that.
But if I just--
Please.
I failed to mention it in my earlier two minutes, but I really want to congratulate staff that, I've done a lot of these things. That was probably the, the most fair and comprehensive staff report I've seen on this issue. It's, it's not an easy issue, and I just want to compliment staff on a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, city attorney. Other comments, questions, discussion? Councilmember Woods?
I think from this, the, the question is in the staff report, and I think it's very pertinent, what the staff report says, it says, what types of community benefits does the city council wish to achieve? And I think we, and they listed things such as local hires, veteran hires, lower-income hires, apprenticeship opportunities, and I think we want to achieve, or at least I would vote to achieve, all of those, all of those, and actually more. We heard testimony today from people who, who can't find work locally and are traveling quite a distance. That's not only hard for them and their families, but it's not good for our environment as far as vehicle miles traveled and whatnot, so if we can have something local, I think we achieve even more. I think we also see, although they're private projects, we have seen a number of large projects in the city stalled, and a lot of that stalling has to do with financing some of it, but a lot of it also has to do with labor disputes. And something like this can overcome labor disputes, so those projects are done, they're done on time, they're done in a timely manner. So I think we're trying to achieve everything with this.
Great, thank you. And just, you know, in reading through this, and obviously, you know, it was defined differently, some used at-risk workers, some used disadvantaged workers, that can cover a lot of those categories. I also like what we saw in Long Beach City College, which was the first one, which was a 5% goal for small business and minority women-owned enterprises to participate as contractors or suppliers, and I would add LGBT to that, as the state now has, but I think that would be something that would be great to see, and really encourage those businesses to be able to get work locally as well. I know we're just giving you general guidelines, I think we talked, and, or talks we've had outside of, you know, this was a million dollars in, for city-funded city projects, and then see how that goes, and we can decide if we want to go beyond that. But I think we should do it for the city first, as we discussed at the last meeting, so people can see the results of it. Obviously, private construction can always do these, but I think we can set an example with it. Anything else on this? Do you have enough direction? Oh, Mayor Protim Holstich.
Thank you. I strongly agree. So it's been incredibly moving. Thank you to everyone who is here at 10, when you have to maybe leave for work at 3:00. It's, it's incredible, incredibly moving to hear your stories and, and how important this is as a region. I think we know that access to good-paying, stable jobs is probably one of the most important issues that faces the city. I know council member Garner grew up here, my husband grew up here, grew up at the Boys and Girls Club, and so many of our friends struggle and are making minimum wage here and can't afford to live and work in Palm Springs. And so I, I can imagine it's, you know, it's difficult to see all the jobs that are happening but aren't going to locals. That's incredibly important. So I'm, I'm really excited that we're moving this forward, that we'll have an opportunity for community benefits, that we can talk about local hire, we can talk about preferences, we can talk about all the benefit to our community, and making sure that our tax dollars, that are public dollars, are being invested back into our communities and to our residents and our workers, and that's what's important. So really grateful for everyone who brought this forward. I would just ask for community input, so thinking through how we can get community input about what are the community benefits we want to see. You know, none of us up here, I think, can make that decision alone, and so hearing from experts, hearing from people in the different trades, hearing from our residents, of just thinking through, how can we get good input about who we should, you know, what community benefits we should really look for, and then what would be workable for our community, so that we have a smaller community, thinking through, you know, what percentage of local hire would work for us, you know, what other types of communities do we need to serve that are underserved or, or not accessing good-paying, stable jobs? So that would be my only request before I bring it back, is trying to think through sort of some stakeholder outreach to get those opinions from folks who, who've lived the experience.
Okay, anything else on that? Do you have enough direction? Does anyone not want to move forward with this? I didn't hear that. So I think you have direction to move forward. I think liaisons can work with you on that and think about the outreach, you know, and reach out, obviously, to--
I think, I think we've received clear direction on the community workforce agreement, so the only other item or aspect of this agenda item then is the labor peace agreement.
I would like to see us follow the lead of Cathedral City and move to 10-person minimum, or trigger that in cannabis that would put in place the labor peace agreements.
Okay, council member Garner.
My suggestion was to go with five, but more importantly, what we did here in public comment as far as the employees, I do think that it shouldn't be just full-time employees, it should be employees generally. I'm, I think, I prefer five, and I would be willing to do 10. I'm, I'm curious what other people think.
Mayor Protim Holstich.
Thank you.
I think the point about part, all employees, full-time and part-time, is very important.
Yes.
I agree. Most, you know, civil rights or other labor protections often apply to employee, with employers with five or more, and so that, to me, sounds like a good threshold. And I completely agree about the full-time employees or the supervisors, that's just going to incentivize employers not to make people full-time or make them supervisors. So I agree that that's really important. I do have some questions, I'd be really interested to learn about if this could only apply to the cannabis industry, or if there are other proprietary interests that the city might have in other industries. When we did have the Business Retention Economic Development Subcommittee meeting, we did hear from a lot more cannabis business owners who talked about, you know, being sensitive to being singled out often as an industry. Having labor peace agreements is important in many different industries and not just cannabis, so I would be interested to see how we can talk about it broadly for our workforce or for employers, as opposed to adding more and more regulations to cannabis and singling out that industry, when hotels get TOT incentive, you know, incentive programs which are tax dollars, and often, you know, those employees are making minimum wage. There might be interest there from the city proprietary interest.
We can certainly look into it. Following the state's model, this proposal was based on the fact that the city receives significant tax revenues from the cannabis industry, and courts have said that just tax revenues alone is not enough, but the state is taking the tack that because of the significance, the volume of tax revenues that are coming in, are expected to come in from cannabis, that, that's the, that's a proprietary interest. So other, other, other programs in the city, such as, as you mentioned, hotels where, where the city receives significant revenue, might be candidates, so staff and the city attorney's office can certainly look at that and bring it back.
That'd be great, and I would like to see just more for both of these items, just outreach and stakeholder input for, across the board, so that we can get that feedback and craft something that'll be workable, because we're all in the economy together here, and so sometimes, and on our economic development committee, we heard sort of it being pitted like workers versus employers, or, you know, but really, we're all in this together for the economy, and a rising tide lifts all boats, and so we need this to work for the city of Palm Springs, and I think it can benefit business owners as well as our workforce. So that would be good, I think, to explore, instead of, since we have no stakeholders here, you know, and we haven't heard those, and then they'll be surprised at the end of it if we don't do that outreach.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I'm also agree on employees, we talked about that previously, because we want to actually encourage people to hire full-time employees, not part-time employees. So I think that's important. I do want to ask, and I'm sorry, I didn't ask this before, and if you don't have the answer, that's fine, we can get it another time. When the state looked at this, do you have any knowledge of why they went with 20? I'm sure there are advocates for lower numbers, I'm sure there are advocates for higher numbers or none, so.
You know, I, I don't offhand, I can certainly look into the legislative history of that number and where it came from and report back to you.
It would be good to see before we finalize that, but I do think, you know, what we're talking about is not requiring employees to join a union, where just that people can be neutral on it and have the opportunity to meet with people and make that decision. And so I'm very, I'm comfortable with five. I think, you know, less than that, there's not a lot of people to organize, but I am, I'm convinced from the meetings I've had that, you know, that it makes sense, and you don't want people creating separate entities to get around numbers because they think it might benefit them either, so I think that's another reason. But, you know, this is an industry that we're working really hard to be at the forefront of minimizing the impacts from it to the city, but we know we have had some, and so having, you know, better jobs and job protections for the workers in that industry, and from looking at where people work in cannabis, the majority are Palm Springs residents. and from looking at where people work in cannabis, the majority are Palm Springs residents. So that was really good to see when we looked at that previously. I don't know, we haven't looked at that probably for six months, but we saw a lot of our cannabis operators had 50%, 75%, some close to 100%, Palm Springs residents. And we want those to be good-paying, secure, full-time jobs, which addresses enabling people to work and live in our city. So I think this is a great opportunity for people, and I'm excited to move this forward as well. Nothing else on that? Any direction? Okay. Well, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I could go back to 3A, I need to read the ordinance title, which is "In Ordinance of the City of Palm Springs, California, Amending Chapter 10.20 of the Palm Springs Municipal Code Regarding Empowerment of Animals, Deleting Section 10.20.060, Owners' Rights to Redeem Animals from Purchaser, and Section 10.20.070, Owners' Liability to City When Redeeming Animals from Purchaser, and Amending Section 10.20.030 and Chapter 10.4 and 10.24 of the Palm Springs Municipal Code Adding Regulations for Breeding Permits."
Great. Thank you. The next item is 4A. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, I would like to just explain to you in summary fashion, both of the Library Commission and the council Subcommittee for the Library Renovation, Mayor Protem Holstich and Councilmember Garner have met and supported this measure. Basically, what it is, we're now ready to go to the next level with regard to the building programming for the library. What the commission is recommending is that we go to the next level with the consultant. And so what's on your agenda and before you is an amendment to their contract to do those services. That's number one. Number two, at council's request, is a look at master planning Sunrise Park, which will also help guide how the library is renovated. That being said, what we're recommending is that we remove the Rios Clemente contract from this action this evening. We need to refine and get some additional information on their scope of work. They are providing that for us, they were not able to provide it for us for today. So what we're going to ask is that we remove that from the agenda this evening. We'll bring that back at the next meeting, but we'll go forward with the consultant on the programming for the library, that the Library Commission requested. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Wood?
Thank you, Dr. Reddy. It's a Herculean effort to do this, and it is, I think the idea of master planning for this park is a fantastic idea. And I think thinking really big is a great idea, but at some point, you've got to think really big and then decide how you're going to pay for that really big idea, and whether that's...
Bummer.
Right, a bummer. Whether that's in phases or whether that's whatever. And I think at some point, thinking big and brainstorming and visioning is great, but we also need to have our contracts bring that into some sort of a reality of what it's going to take for this city, $47,000, to make that a reality with the budget that we have. So that's one little comment or suggestion that I, or observation that I made. The other thing that I saw is I'm glad to hear that you pulled the Rios Clemente Hale Studios contract. I was concerned that we weren't going out to bid. Downtown Park is much different than this type of a park. I don't know if they've got all the capabilities or if they're the best firm to do it. So skirting Title VII, I think, is something I would not support.
Councilmember Garner.
I just wanted to quickly say that we don't have to take a vote on the labor issues that we just discussed, because we're just making, excuse me, recommendations. I know we kind of like moved through that quickly. So for anybody who's still here, we're moving forward with it.
We're moving forward.
No, we're not going to be voting on it, yeah.
Yeah, there's no, yeah.
It was just a discussion, we're moving forward with it.
It'll come back.
We're, yeah, it'll come back to us.
And so next week, we can reach out to stakeholders about next steps, so to see where the council was, so we knew how to move forward. Okay? And thank you for being here, of course.
You're welcome.
Sure.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And that'll be on both. So thank you for saying that, yes, obvious to us, because...
I noticed there was a little bit of confusion.
Confusion, yeah, okay.
Okay, on to this. So I, Councilmember Holstich and I did meet and talk about this. I think that the big thing that we want to make sure we have is momentum with this project and that it moves forward, which I think we're all on the same page for. I guess we will talk about Rios Clemente later at another meeting, but I do think that just to offer a little bit of information, part of the reason we were interested in that is because they had a history with the city, and that might have some different input, since this would be a larger project than just the library, but the entire Sunrise Plaza area. So I would just support moving forward with, with both of those as soon as possible.
I think that it is really important that we take a look at the master plan of Sunrise Park. And one of the reasons why it was recommended that the library remain at Sunrise Park is because of the various connections that were possible there, but ones that have largely been unrealized. So I, I think it is important that we go forward with that master plan and that we maintain the momentum that we had from the Library Building Subcommittee. So I'm very supportive of moving forward with the portion that's before us this evening, and look forward to the further evaluation of Rios Clemente for doing the master plan. We can't lose sight of that. This is, though, going to be an extremely expensive project, and part of the planning that we have to do is to identify what is the budget going to be and where are we going to find the revenue to do what needs to be done.
Mayor Protem Holstich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree. I just had a few comments. So Kathy Wermuth gave the recommendation that the process for the program committee and the data and the survey include the line staff, for people who serve clients at the library every day. I think that was an excellent idea, and I'd love to incorporate it. I also keep advocating to include kids and families and, you know, the partners within Sunrise Park, so the Boys and Girls Club, the Meisel Senior Center, sort of, you know, if we're building a library of the future, we need to include the clients of now and of the future. And having youth leadership, I think, is really important. So I just noted the survey is going to be posted online and then paper copies, so I just wonder how we can reach students and families, you know, directly giving the survey to the Boys and Girls Club families or other ideas that are better than I have right now that you'll have, I think is, is really important. And I just wanted to note, so step five says develop the vision and building program. It doesn't specifically state, you know, comparing the program for our library with existing models and the existing libraries. I think that's important, too, since we have Ranch of Mirage Library, which is decently close to some people in Palm Springs. So just thinking through, I know our library director, it's an expert at this, but what are the best practices? And then how does that relate to the overall, overall library system of the Coachella Valley, I think would be important, too? How can we stand out and be the best library, since we're going to have a better library than Ranch of Mirage? And that's all I have. We may, we may not have an observatory.
Councilmember Middleton, are you still, or is that all? Councilmember Wood?
I think this is, you know, we have an excellent opportunity at our hands to really create a world-class park. And, and I think you're right, keeping that momentum going is really an important aspect of that. One thing that I just, I have a personal issue with is the word stakeholder, because stakeholder means there's a, somebody who has more of a stake in it than somebody else in this community. I think the community as a whole has interest in this park and all the aspects of this park, the library being just one aspect of it. So I would just like to say, let's use the word community instead of stakeholder and get away from the hierarchy of people's interest in something like this.
I made a motion for approval to proceed with the redevelopment of the public, of the Palm Springs Public Library. I guess that wouldn't include the Rios Clemente Hale Studios, it would just be for the amendment with library strategies to proceed with Phase Two of their work.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion for Mayor Protem Holstich, seconded by Councilmember Middleton.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Okay, next item is 4B. Staff report, please.
Thank you. Council requested that the item of boards and commissions come before you, just for some general discussion and any direction to staff in terms of the roles of commissions and, and, you know, how we integrate them into, to our whole organizational structure. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I think it'd best to turn over to council and, and get your discussion.
Sure. And I'd like, you know, let's hear from folks, any thoughts they have, but I'd like to sort of suggest something. One, since we do have examples on a youth council, I think we might be able to have more specific talks on that one. I think a tenant night with not a lot of commissioners here to talk to, to go through each one commission doesn't make a lot of sense. And so what I would suggest, but input, one of the things we did talk about was doing a, there used to be either quarterly or three times a year meeting with all the commission chairs that the mayor did. I would suggest that we reestablish that with the mayor and Mayor Protem at the time, and maybe we do that first meeting, try to do it by the end of March, and really have that in-depth with them and bring back what we learned to the whole council as a discussion item, because doing it without their expertise, which I think is just hard to get at a council meeting, I appreciate we didn't want to try and do another study session with the other ones we have coming up, is just going to be very challenging. I do think the youth council, though, we can talk about now, but open to other ideas.
I also wanted to talk about outreach. I know that we have two proposals in here, and I think an outreach is a big, a big part of this discussion, that is separate from...
From, yes.
From boards and commissions, day-to-day structure.
Great. Mayor Protem Holstich.
Thank you. I made a list of issues with our commission structure, as it currently is, that we can go over. But I think that we should engage our commissions here, and so I don't know if we want to create a subcommittee of commissioners with a liaison or two or none from the city council to, you know, get that input. Commissioners are experts about serving on a commission. I know many of us have served on a, all of us have served on a commission, but it's maybe been a while. So thinking through, how can we, how can we ask and engage our commissioners to do this work? So either bringing this as an item to our commissions and having them make recommendations, and then we can consolidate that, or we could survey our commissioners online and get their input. I think that would be really helpful. I have a sense that, I've talked to a lot of commissioners for the last two years as we've done these commission interviews, and we frequently in the interviews ask them how it's going, and we get input from existing commissioners when we re-interview them about what's working and what's not, and we get some really good impact, input. So I think the expertise is already there, and we don't need to generate it up here. So that's maybe what I would propose, is that we set a group of commissioners as a subcommittee, and they can work on recommendations, and then the city council can work on that with them and consider it. We got different, some emails from different commissions, but it's just hard to consolidate that all together. So maybe then we could have more information when this comes back to us. For the outreach and consultants, I had a similar comment. So I think that we have a lot of expertise on our commissions, and we have a lot of people doing outreach in the community. And I think that there's, I mean, maybe we can do both and, but we should think about how to engage the 100-plus free volunteers that we have for the city already, who are embedded in the community, and maybe not embedded in all the communities we want to reach yet, but, but many are, and I think we can engage those folks to do the important work. We often hear, what we hear from our commissioners is sometimes that they, depending on the commission, don't have enough to do or aren't clear about their mission or about their role, and they want more work from council, and we want to work in a more coordinated way. So I think that would be interesting, too, to ask. Often, we get the best outreach that I've seen in two years that I've been interviewing probably over 100 potential commissioners, is that we get the best applicants when council members and existing commissioners and city leaders and community leaders do the personal work of outreach, because those are personal relationships, and it's just relationship-based. And so a lot of the, I was a little afraid by some of the costs of these outreach. For example, I think social media is incredibly important. I would wonder if we want to embed any of these, like do stipends to local community groups that are doing this work and already doing outreach, or if we want to hire, you know, someone on staff instead of hiring an outside consultant, have someone do social media and outreach that's bilingual, that might be more accessible for the public, like 24/7. The youth commission, I love the idea, I think it's great. I've engaged with the Boys and Girls Club, key, key club leaders, and I've met with them and asked them what they want. I would love for them to be engaged in building what they want and how they'll engage with the city. It's nothing, you know, nothing for us without us, and so I think it's hard as adults to sit up here and say, we think there should be a youth commission, because 18-year-olds and 16-year-olds and 15-year-olds see the world in very different ways and engage with the city in very different ways. So I just love to, maybe we can work with, we can send it out and get youth involved and have a town hall, or get ideas about what, how they would want to see that commission or how that might work. I think that would be more effective than setting something right now without them.
Councilmember Garner.
So in terms of youth commission, I do want to make sure that we're including our youth in all of this, and I want to make sure that we, but we, I want to make sure that we move forward on it and that we, we actually do something. Because I think that part of the beauty of having a youth commission is that they can really lead it and determine how it is that they want it to work. And so part of this, I think, is just giving, for us up here, to say, we are going to have some form of youth commission, here, here's dedicated time to do that, and then let's bring in the youth to tell us more parameters and what that actually looks like. But I do want to point out, too, that I, all I did was just send a little Instagram out saying, hey, I want input on this. And then two of the youth in our community immediately responded and sent in emails to us about that. And that was just, you know, a really quick thing that I did. So I think we have youth that are really interested and want to be involved, we just have to talk to them, and, but they, but they are interested. In terms of outreach, I think that it's really important that we do more work on this. I don't think that it's something that we can do just on our own. I think we have to engage someone, whether we're hiring city staff. I think that, to me, ultimately, the goal would be to have someone on city staff that does this work long-term, that does this in their day-to-day. But initially, I think we need to bring somebody in that's going to help with making sure that we're really getting into the community in a different way, because part of the problem is that there are segments of our community that we haven't been able to successfully reach, and so having somebody that's really dedicated to making sure that happens is going to be very important. And I do think it's going to cost money to do that, but it's part of the process and part of making sure that everyone is engaged. And a lot of it is, is also with communities that have been left out for so long, there's a lot of, you know, going back multiple times to make it happen. a lot of, you know, going back multiple times to make it happen. So it's not just a bus stop ad or a Facebook post, it's that repeated connection, it's making people feel that they're a part of the community, it's hosting events, it's making sure that people are aware that we do care and we want their input. So I, I really support the idea of us spending some time determining what we want to do and actually budgeting for that to happen.
Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lot of things here, so let me try to take them one at a time. One of the conversations that we had regarding our own work as we were moving away from subcommittees was that we wanted to have our boards and commissions play a larger role in evaluating policy and making recommendations to us on policy. So it, and I'm very supportive of that. I think there's an awful lot of expertise and opportunity for community engagement that can be done much more effectively by the boards and commissions. So as we're looking at what we're going to do, I want that to be a very critical part of our recommendations on boards and commissions. I do believe that we are falling short when it comes to offering recognition and appreciation to the members of our boards and commissions, and that should be some consultation with people who are on our boards and commissions as to what would in fact be meaningful to them in terms of recommendation, or of recognition and appreciation. I'm very supportive of the concept of a youth commission. They have worked well in a variety of locales, and I just think we need to make sure that we get it right, so that we have young people who want to be involved and are working on those commissions, and it may well be that there's a better structure than a commission for, for our youth. So I'm, I'm open to any ideas there. With regard to outreach, it is something that we did, and both O'Bailey and DeAzealan, when we were going through, two years ago, the CVRA did outstanding work for us. So I'm very open to bringing them back to do work for us in the future. As I read through these proposals, I thought it was, at times, a little bit thin in terms of trying to understand exactly what work was going to be performed and what the objectives were of the work. So I'm supportive of the concept, but I need to see a little bit more in terms of what it is that we would actually be asking them to accomplish and what the action steps are that they would be taking.
Thank you. Councilmember Woods.
You know, we're in a very, very fortunate position on some of our commissions. As an example, I think we just had 17 or 18 applicants for our planning commission. That says a lot about our city. And then, yet, other commissions, we kind of struggle to fill the roles of them. And I think one of the things we need to do is, is to make it exciting to be on a commission and/or advisory body. And I think, how do you, how do you do that? How do you make it exciting? How do you want to get people engaged? You can't just keep, you know, sending them stuff, you have to make it exciting. And I think one of the things that we don't do, that I'd like to see us do, is basically have an annual gathering of all of the commissions, where each commission does a short little two- or three-minute video about who they are, what they are, they're all in it, that makes it interesting, they can be fun with it, and all the other commissions then find out kind of what they do, who they are, and it makes it exciting. And it can be televised on the, our Channel 17, is that what it is? Channel seven, I don't have cable, Channel 17 as well. So it could be on YouTube as well. So I think that would be a really important part to maintain our kind of excitement about these commissions and understanding what everyone's doing, and it's also good for council. The other thing, just in looking at boards and commissions as we changed it, in the short three months that I've been sitting up here, we have already given work to three commissions. We've given work to the planning commission, the sustainability commission, and I can't think of the, the arts commission, yeah. We've already given work to them, and I think we need to continue to do that type of stuff so that they feel valued, they know what we're looking for, and then they can bring stuff and bubble stuff towards us as well. So I guess the outcome of what I'm trying to say is, I would be in real support of an annual meeting with all the commissions that includes video clips.
So these are all great ideas. And so, just one thing I want to add to the mix here is, you know, we change criteria to be on our boards and commissions, to people who live, work, or go to school in Palm Springs, so we should take out the voter registration checkpoint if it's not, it may already be. But as we do outreach, assuming everyone's on board with taking the next steps towards the youth council, commission, whatever it may be, and also doing that outreach that, you know, a student can apply to be on a board and commission as a voting member if they would like as well, because we're reaching out to the same group of people. And so we should take, take that opportunity. I agree, we do, we will need some outside support. How much and specifics we want to do, how we want to handle social media internally as well, I think is a good point that Councilmember Holstage raised. I agree, I love the idea of each board and commission presenting at an event, it could be something at the convention center, the community can be invited as well. You know, I went to the police volunteer dinner they do every year, and I think doing something like that, where we just recognize and thank people. I think we did a really good job with our CVRA working group in acknowledging. I think everyone probably felt very acknowledged in that, we did things here, we did things at the Human Rights Commission, and I think it's really important that we do that with all our boards and commissions. But I think one of the differences, at least my experience here so far, in going through the list and reading the ordinances, is some commissions are staffed fully, some are not. Some boards and commissions have real decision-making and, at the very least, strong recommendations of ordinances to council, others don't. And so I think that's the meeting with the commission chairs that we need to do to really get a sense from them, right? People feeling fulfilled, or if they're just having meetings to talk, but they don't feel they're accomplishing something, that we've heard that with some of the boards and commissions in the interviews, when you meet with a chair or a representative, if someone's up for renewal. So I think sort of following up on what Mayor Protem Holstage and I said, on that piece, maybe we just set up a meeting with the chairs to get some input, and, because it really, this may really need to be a study session, not at 10:30 at night, where we have, you know, can start, you know, on time with that issue and get that kind of input and discussion that's thoughtful. But I think getting some input from each board and commission and talking to the chairs, and they can put it on their agendas, and then bringing us what they think would be helpful, because each one's going to be somewhat different, is probably a good step. I don't know what you need to move forward with a youth council of those steps. I don't know, is that you, city clerk, or city manager?
Well, there's a lot, I think my head's going to explode.
Yeah, no, I know, that's-
So, so a couple of observations. With regard to the youth, I think, I think there's some good examples, and we use that as a template. So let's put together some ideas and get that back to you, some, for some formal guidance in terms of creating it. So I think we can work with that to get that going quickly. Just a general comment on boards and commissions, you're correct, Mayor, there are some that have actually a quasi-legislative, you know, planning, and, and the library board has a state mandate. But for the most part, boards and commissions have, have no budget, no staff, it's, it's sort of been a Band-Aid, it's just the structural arrangement of this city government, because by nature, it was just small, and, and it never really could fully support boards and commissions. And so we've always made do, and we made do barely. That being said, again, like sustainability actually has a budget and a funding source. Most do not. So it's, it's a mix. I think getting the input from the meeting, because the mayor used to do that, meet quarterly with each chair, together, the group of chairs, and they had that dialogue, they were able to have a better idea of what council's direction was through those meetings, and, and then they had, knew a little better what to work on. That being said, also, we used to have an annual recognition dinner, so I think all those kinds of things we need to bring back, get reincorporated. But there's one thing that would make a big difference in all of them, and, and I hesitate to say it, because I don't think I can do it exactly, but if, if myself as city manager basically was, was involved in every commission meeting, then that, that allows the back-and-forth with, with council, because commissions speak through their votes, and so bringing that, that helps. But again, that's not practical. So what we've done is, we've had department heads basically be liaisons to commissions. So I, I think it's time, we need to reevaluate how we do that. There may be some more resources we need for specific commissions, but I think that discussion will come after you have your meetings with them and you get a better idea of what you want their missions to be. So, so that being said, we certainly can improve this process for the, for the outreach, get the youth commission going, and probably move on a little better path than we have been. But the structural arrangements have sort of hampered us, and, and so you're starting to see some of these issues arise. So that being said, Mayor, I think we have some direction, we just have to keep working through it.
I did want to just point out that one of the consultants is here, so if there are questions or interest.
No, I mean, I read those, I think we need to do outreach if we're gonna, you know, when we did more outreach, we got more diverse applicants, and so, and I think it is on both points, we need some outside help, but we all, five of us, and staff to the extent when they're involved, need to be out in the community encouraging people to engage and letting people know we want them to engage, because I think we need to do both.
I'm, I really want to push back on this a lot. So I think that, that is, it's really important for us to do outreach and for us to connect with our networks, but I also, as somebody that was just recently sitting out there and not on this dais, I did a lot of work, and so did a handful of other people, to get a lot of the applicants on, to this table. And I'm telling you that there's just not the capacity for this, for our residents to do this in the way that it needs to be done, because we need to do so much more outreach. With the CVRA working group, like, we were really doing intense work, knocking on doors, and, and we had assistance, and we needed more assistance. And I, I want us to do outreach with what we have and engage in that way, but I also want us to make a concerted effort to fund this type of thing and to make sure that we are making it a priority, because I just don't think that we can unload on a handful of the same residents over and over again for too long. I just think that it's, it's getting old, and we, we have to make sure that we're, we're dedicating time and resources to getting this to be a bigger thing.
Yeah. And if I wasn't clear, I think we're saying the same thing. I think we need the outside support, and we all have to do our part as well, but our networks are not going to reach out as broadly as we want them to. So I think we need to do both, was my point. I think we do need help, because I think it made a huge difference in the CVRA work as well.
I think I heard everyone agrees that we need assistance and we should fund it. I think we all agree, and I didn't mean to say that we should just do with what we can. I think one thing that I'm reacting to, at least in these, and I know we just asked for general, what are these called? Bids or, you know, proposals, is that they don't have clear deliverables. And I agree with Councilmember Garner that, like, bus stop ads or social media in general, like, those aren't deliverables. And so it is, like, what is the outreach that we want to see as a city? What, who do we need to reach? How many people do we need to recruit? You know, what does that process look like? So that, you know, we're funding really clear deliverables that the community can understand as well, and, and get kind of more comprehensive proposals with real deliverables, so that we know, because we've all worked with, I've done outreach and community organizing for over 10 years, right? It, it depends on how you do it and what exactly you do and what those deliverables are, and we could fund this all day and all year and not see any changed outcomes. And so I just want to make sure that what we're fun, we think thoughtfully about what should be internal. I think social media should be internal, I think we should have someone who does that, who's an expert and who can be bilingual on staff, maybe if they're media or other requests. So like, what should be internal that we could fund that might be cheaper to have internally than to have externally, versus what do we need expert, you know, outside consultants to do, and what does that look like?
Definitely. This is something that I just think we need to spend a lot more time on. I mean, and I agree on that, I just don't want it to get set aside. So I would like, and the other thing about this agenda item is that there's a lot of things that could potentially have been discussed. One thing that I thought was going to be discussed that isn't really on the table right now is our process for selecting board and commission members. So I think if we can take this agenda item and really separate everything out to be addressed separately, I think that would make a, a big difference. And maybe it is a study session for all of this, but it is separated so that we can really see what it is and get a staff report on all of that, that would be helpful. But I, I don't want us to push this down the hill, if that's the right phrase.
Yeah. No, and I think that makes sense, because my concern is, and it may need to be a study session, because there are a lot of pieces to this, right? So we can try and take them one at a time in a real discussion, so no one's head blows up. And, but you know, as we're, you know, moving timing in meetings, right, starting with the next fiscal year, and we're starting to do outreach for people to apply, as people's terms end and there are vacancies, you know, all that goes together, and so there is a timing issue, because what we don't want is, also, if you do the outreach without figuring out how you make it a meaningful experience, people don't stay. So, you know, this may need, maybe this really should be a study session, there could be some outreach to the individual commission chairs, we can do before then, but as we look at the calendar, I think we really need a really thoughtful conversation where we have a good chunk of time, you know, not starting at 10 something, and to really delve into this.
But what we could use some help on priorities, because honestly, you're, we're at the capacity now. I mean, we have so many things on our plate, so many projects. We struggle now to keep things falling through the cracks. So this is an important element of it, but I, I guess it would be helpful to understand the priority, like, we have a lot of other things that you've wanted staff or study sessions on. We have some calendar, we, some we don't. So I guess it just needs to understand the priority. There's just a lot on our plate, and, and we're close to being overwhelmed now. So there's a lot of pieces here, so I guess some priorities would be helpful.
I think that's well said, and I think, what is our goal? You know, we have to really decide, we have to define a couple of goals we want to achieve from that. Is it diversity on the commissions? Is it getting people on the commission? Is it better communication? You know, we can have all of these goals, but we need, and maybe it's a step process, you know, where we, we, you know, we don't overwhelm ourselves with trying to do it all at once, but we take small baby steps to trying to move us to a direction we want to be. And I think ultimately, our mantra should be, you can make a difference. Get involved, you can make a difference. That should be our mantra, and I give you an example. Somebody showed, I'm not suggesting anyone out there do this, but somebody showed up at my door today, completely unannounced, with all of these great sustainability ideas. And I really tried to encourage this person to get involved in the Sustainability Commission, but he had no idea what that meant, he thought it meant a lot of meetings, you know, versus being a lot of fun. So I think it was incumbent upon me to kind of demystify that whole process, send him to our fabulous city clerk to get involved and get in a queue to be in something like this. And I think that's, that's a simple step we can take. I think having a board and commission dinner or a lunch is another simple step to start the process of communication and excitement, and then we can start working on diversity and some of the other things that we want to achieve as well.
So I, I think the opposite, I think we need to work on the diversity in the outreach first. I think that otherwise, we're just doing a lot for the people who are- I think that otherwise we're just doing a lot for the people who are already involved and not spending any time on making sure that we're thinking about the people who are not even at the table. I want to do all of the things that, for the people that are already involved and I want their input, but I also just feel like it's so easy for us to forget about who's not here because we're not hearing their voices.
So if I, if I could just, in summary, and I think, I think the youth commission is something that we can get our arms around and do that relatively quickly. So I think there are the things, the meetings you're going to have, scheduling the recognition dinner, on the, getting the diversity, I think it's a capacity issue. So I think it's going to be a combination of, if what I'm hearing, because I can run with this. We're going to refine these, we can refine the, I work with the consultants and I think we can get these refined on the deliverables in a better place relatively quickly. In addition to, you know, having the internal social media person, which we need for a whole lot of other reasons. So I think I have enough, what I've heard, to move this conversation to the next place relatively quickly and we can get some action moving on this.
I'm sorry, it's late. I think we're having a chicken or the egg conversation, but I do think it's important because I've noticed that the commissions have significant problems that we need to address. And when we engage like working people or young people or people who haven't traditionally been engaged and we join a commission and we're the only one like us and it just feels like meetings and you get frustrated because nothing you do goes to council, which was personally my experience on the Human Rights Commission while I was there. You know, we're setting people up for failure and our system of interviewing people is currently setting up for people for failure. So we can recruit all these great people, but then we're interviewing them four times and then we're losing them. So it's like, we have to do both. We have to fix what is currently here so that we're not recruiting for something that's not, I mean, we have great commissions and we do great work, but in my opinion, it's not exactly working. And so, right, we have to fix what there is so that we're recruiting something, recruiting for something good that works and we don't just do all this work. Because we could do a ton of work on recruiting people and then not retain them. And that's why people had made, I think David Feltman made the recommendation to assess some of the data. So how many people are coming off every year? You know, what's their retention? What's the recruitment like? What are the diversity? I think we're talking about the next item. What are the diversity factors that we currently have? You know, we have commissions that are 100% white and we have commissions that are 100% male. And, you know, we need to know all those things before like we're making these decisions. So I agree with your proposal. I think that sounds good. We don't want to overwhelm you and we do want to give you priorities and maybe in goal setting, we can do that quicker rather than, you know, sooner rather than later. And so we can really like set this out for the year, what we're going to do.
As much as I don't like this, I actually think that this might be something that would be good for a subcommittee just because it can move the process forward a little bit faster, especially in light of this conversation because I do think that everything kind of has to happen at once. Because the other thing about outreach, of course, is it's not necessarily just outreach to get people onto a commission. It's just outreach in general to engage with the city. So it, a lot of times it can take a lot of, many, many months of outreach before you actually, and because outreach maybe is just like events. It's like a lot of different, it's touching people numerous times before they necessarily get involved. So I'm, I'm interested in being a part of a subcommittee that kind of really focuses on pushing this forward in a, in a bigger way so that we can also assist staff in making sure that it moves forward and not give you too vague of goals, if anybody is interested.
We do already have our interviewing committee. So we're already working on currently interviewing folks, so we could work on that with staff.
And it's an ad hoc, so it's not a long-term subcommittee.
It's the Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Garner.
Yeah. I think that's a good idea because I do think it's too much to throw on you and I think we'll have better success moving it forward that way.
Yeah, that will be helpful to us with the subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll get the first meeting scheduled. We'll coordinate with your schedules. Good. Thank you.
Okay. Our next and last item, 4C. Thank you for hanging out and staying through this. Staff report?
Mayor, we've talked about this, as you know, several times over the last couple of years. We, you've given us some direction to do some things, others we've, we've, you've decided not, not to move on or we didn't have the ability to. That being said, you suggested that we have the discussion back with the new council to see if there are some things on, on here that we would like to move forward with. So right now it's just a discussion, see if there's any direction. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And so just from a process, Councilmember Garner, just thinking how we go through it to start, but go ahead. You know, especially on the, sort of the summary page to start, to just go through those, which are the sort of the bigger, broader things. There's a lot more detail behind in the report, but I think this was a good summarization of things and maybe just, you know, take one at a time for the things that haven't been completed to just going to get a sense of council, what we want to move forward. You know, we're not going to make decisions, yes, we want this salary or this, but what things do, really, we're not moving forward with, what do we want to move forward with? That's sort of what I was thinking.
Mr. Mayor, I do have the summary on slides if you would like them to be pulled up.
Ooh, nice. Yes, please. Well done. Just give him the board and commission stuff. Thank you. Is that good? Or do you have something else? Okay. So obviously we completed the first three, right? Which is great. So the next thing was district election process. And one of the things that was recommended, I think council really liked, was pursuing ranked choice voting. And I think you have some newer information.
Certainly. So earlier this year, the Secretary of State had decertified election equipment for various counties, including Riverside County. So it's upgrading its voting equipment. In doing that, their new equipment could process ranked choice voting ballots. It will require some software upgrades. My understanding is the city of Palm Desert is interested in doing this as part of their districting process. There is a cost factor, so the additional programming and because it does require a separate ballot from what would be the general ballot for all the other races, they are looking at spending up to $350,000 for their initial election. In comparison, the city's municipal election is approximately $100,000. But it does appear that the equipment would be able to process ranked choice voting.
When would their first election be under it, if they?
They were proposing to do it beginning this November 2020 unless it's not feasible through the software and then it would be for the next election.
Okay, great. Thank you. Councilmember Garner?
Obviously this, all this stuff is near and dear to my heart. The ranked choice voting, I think, is really compelling and it definitely engages more people because as we just saw with this last election too, there's a lot of people who feel frustrated because maybe you didn't get, someone didn't get quite 50% of the vote and what would have happened? And so I think ranked choice voting really, it prevents that, right? Because you really get to have more of a say. I'd be interested to see how it goes with, with this first set and then discuss it more from there. But I think it's really compelling and something that we should at least be following, personally following along.
I agree. Councilmember Middleton?
I think it is something that we need to, to be looking at and investigating. More places are moving to ranked choice voting. Ultimately, with ranked choice voting, someone is going to get to 50% plus one of, of the votes. And that is something that I think is very important. I would note that, and it's not quite immediately relevant to us, but today's New York Times editorial was in favor of moving to ranked choice voting in presidential primaries. And for those of us who are in the middle of that now and look back four years ago, there are ample reasons to believe that ranked choice voting might be a much better system for resolving that issue. This is going to be an emerging trend in our country.
Yeah. Well, at some point you'll let us know how you have time on council nights to read the editorial and the New York Times because I'm impressed, but I have something to read later tonight, no doubt. So as a general sense, just so we're clear, that city clerk will follow this, see what happens in Palm Desert this year and then report back? Everyone good with that? Okay. Hey, great. So the next is removing barriers to running for office. So salary increase for city council and the number of ideas thrown out. And so, and I know Councilmember Garner was involved in this, but for Councilmember Woods, as we talked about it, there were sort of two points. And obviously the goal, and we heard that from comments as well, is we want everyone to be able to run and serve on council. And one of the questions we talked about is, is that, that this should be paid like a full-time job and people should make this their full-time job, which helps a whole bunch of people, but also makes it hard for people in a whole number of professions and some younger people who are building their careers and only are going to do this for one period of time, who can't take the time off to do that versus more staff support. Those were sort of the conversations we had before, so I just wanted to frame it since you were not on that committee. And those were the discussions we had and we sort of left it with, we added a little staff support, which I think we finally had started this week. We're very excited. It took a long time, but a great hire, so congratulations on that. And, but those were the kind of conversations. How do we make this work either as a full-time job, which helps some people but not others, or a job that's staffed at a level that allows someone to have another job and do this job at the level they need to? And so that's sort of where we left it without, I think, a conclusion. Before we even got into what an amount would be for a salary. So I don't know if people have any thoughts on that? Yeah, please.
Of course I do.
Yeah.
This was the one that we discussed a lot. And one of the things I think we kept coming back to was that salary was really important. Obviously, it doesn't take into account, you know, for myself, obviously, I'm an attorney. Taking time off from being an attorney and then trying to go back to being an attorney would be a fairly difficult thing to do. But I think by, by increasing the salaries, you do allow for a lot of other people to get involved that would not otherwise. And some of this, these salaries could be, you know, similar to what somebody does currently or even could be higher than what some of our residents are currently paid. And so then that does give them the opportunity to participate. But I don't think that we are a part-time council and I don't think we've been a part-time council for quite some time. We have a big city budget and big city asks and the more that we're doing and the more people that are coming into our city and it's going, the demands are going to increase. So I think that this is something that has to be given more thought. And I know that it is politically difficult to make decisions like this, but I think, there have also been other councils who have raised salaries and had it done over time so that it wasn't necessarily affecting the council that was currently sitting. That's some, that's an option. There's things like that. I think there's ways to kind of do things like that, but to just honor the work that's being done and to recognize that if we want our city to move forward in a, in a bigger way, then we're going to have to pay people more to do this job.
And I know some, you know, governments have a sort of whatever, a board, necessarily, city members, but right, a salary setting. Do you have any?
Yeah, so in the city of San Luis Obispo where I was, we had a council compensation committee that was formed every two years to review the council's salary.
And sort of, they made the recommendation or they set them?
They made a recommendation. The council still had to approve it. And just for clarification, if you were to make an adjustment to your salaries, it would be for a future council. You can't impact your own current term.
Right. Yeah. And I think, it was 20 years ago, San Francisco, they actually, because I went to the voters and it went to some salary-setting body who actually set the salaries based on what the job was, what similar jobs were. So it took it totally out of their board supervisor, city council's one in the same, their hands, as I recall. So we might just want to look at some of those models and discuss it further. Anyone, oh, Council, Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you. I would support sending it to a committee to review it like we did with CVRA. So I don't know if there's CVRA members who want to take up this issue next. I see they're sitting here and it's almost 11:00, so they might be interested. This is a really important issue. I think it's the number one issue to address if we care about having diverse voices and lived experiences on city council. I've worked two different full-time jobs, tried to hold down two full-time jobs while serving at this job. No person can work full-time and do this. Sorry to tell you right now as you're already doing it. Best of luck. It's, it, no, no, no person with a normal job could do this job. So it's impossible. And only if you're like me, privileged to be a lawyer and I could, I worked essentially almost for myself and I still had issues and I still had to leave that job. And then I worked for a much harder job and I had no personal life and no, no time. It's really hard. And if we don't, I currently live on the $29,000 a year that I get from this job. That's less than my student loans are a year. So it's a significant issue. I went to a women's conference for young elected leaders, women from all over the country under 35 who are serving. And people told stories about moonlighting at night so that they could be mayor of their town during the day, you know, not being able to afford a car on their salaries and so taking the bus to their mayor positions and appearances. I mean, this is the number one barrier, especially if, I don't even have kids, imagine. I mean, people who are juggling a lot of different things. So I think this is the number one barrier. You know, I saw that Indian Wells is considering increasing their salary to about what ours is. I think we do 20 times the work of Indian Wells, you know, not to throw down that gauntlet to them, but, you know, we have an airport, we have, I mean, the revenue from tourism, the events that we have in the city, the, we have our own police and fire. We just have a different city. The culture is, you know, that this is a full-time job and many people ran on this being a full-time job and that's what voters expect. And then it prioritized people who can do it full-time. And it's just, it's really hard for other people to compete and I think it's nearly impossible. So I support raising the salary. I think the public supports it. Whenever I've put it out there for public comment, I've gotten a lot of positive comments. I don't care, I don't mean for me, but I mean, if you ever want people who are working and those are really important voices, or younger people or people with kids or whatever it is, you have, we just have to pay them, you know? And looking at these salaries though, the median salary in Palm Springs, I mean, making it an either or, I don't agree with necessarily because, you know, some of us are leaving jobs that pay substantially more than this to do this. So even compensating someone $40,000 a year, 45, though I have made that as a full-time attorney, doesn't mean it's necessarily, you know, either or, like you have to do this full-time. It's just, we have to pay people a living wage to do this work. It's, it's really hard if we don't.
That's fair. Councilmember Middleton?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's sit back and take a look at, what's the phrase that starts this? And that is removing barriers for running for office. And what we are trying to do here is to make sure that we have a broader spectrum of individuals within our community who have the capacity to serve on our city council. And I know as we talked about this two years ago, there were an awful lot of comments that were made that we're trying to do this or we're trying to do that most particularly. Ones that somehow or another we're trying to make it difficult for individuals who have businesses to serve on city council or that we're trying to somehow or another politicize this role. I want to see us have an ability to have I want to see us have an ability to have everyone in our community who wants to be able to serve, to have an opportunity to serve. And I'm going to be generational here for a moment. Mayor Protem Holstidge and Councilmember Garner are making incredible sacrifices in terms of their careers and their earning capacity in order to serve on this city council. And they are making choices that I do not have to make because I reached retirement age in public service and now have a pension that makes it possible for me to afford to be able to do this. But if we had, if we were to step back a decade before I had left public service, there is no way I could do the work that I have before me on city council and hold down the kind of responsibility that I had previously. And so we've got to, I think, and I like the concept of some outside commission that makes recommendation, that actually sits down and take a look at what are the comparative responsibilities and the comparative workloads of a city council, and come back to us with recommendations. No one wants to be making a decision that sets their own salary. It's, it's not comfortable, and there's, so, but we have barriers here. Let's do what we can to remove those barriers. But I do want to make two more comments that are a little bit differently. I'm glad we're getting the second assistant, and I'm thrilled with who we've hired. But one of the things I've certainly learned in three years on this city council is our community expects to hear from us. They do not want to receive a phone call from someone saying, "I'm calling on behalf of council member," or "mayor," or "Mayor Protem." They want to hear from us. And that means we have to have the time and the ability to get to every one of those emails and every one of those phone calls, and that is a full-time job. A couple of years ago, my family and I went on vacation, and I had been away from email, getting to where we were going for two days, and I spent my entire first day that I was at our vacation spot responding to emails. I started at 8:30 in the morning, I finished at about 5:30 in the evening, and that was just simply having gone 48 hours without responding to an email. But our community expects us to do those, and each and every one of us has had a very similar experience. Lastly, anyone who has sat through candidate forums knows that sometimes you have individuals who have really stepped up and are very active in their campaigns and are working really hard, and others that don't seem to quite have put together the amount of community support and effort. Reducing the nomination signatures from 120 to 20 is an invitation not to have three, four candidates per office, but to have five, six, seven, and eight candidates for office. I'm not opposed to that if we've got five, six, seven, eight candidates who have generated support within their community. But 20 signatures is a pretty light load to have to get, to be able to get on to the ballot and have an opportunity to make an appearance at every single event with equal time with every other candidate.
And so on that last one, and then just one comment about the first one before we move on, we did move it to 80.
I'm sorry, the, the number's incorrect. The required number of signatures is 80, but no more than 120.
Right. And so we decided not to move it for the reasons you said. I think three of us have recently done it in the district, and I think for anyone who's running, it's a really important thing to do because I think if, over that, what is it, four, six-week period you have, if you're not going to knock on the doors and do the outreach to talk to that many people, that's the concern, Councilmember Middleton, but I don't know what both of your experiences were on that. If 80 seemed reasonable to do in this time?
When you've got the right people helping you, it's a breeze.
Right.
But I mean, but I think that's what you said. It's about making those good community connections. And I do think that it is, I imagine that it's actually probably easier to get these now. I know Councilmember Holstidge had mentioned a lot of people from out of town and things signing on when they shouldn't have on hers. But I think because now it's separated by district, it's easier to find out, you know who those people are, and it's, I mean, it's, you literally could just knock on some doors, and, and you know for sure that they're residents there. So I think it was a little bit easier in that sense. I think it's okay.
Yeah. And I just think on the, you know, salary issue, I, you know, tried to keep a 20-hour-a-week other job my first year on council, and it was, you gave up everything else to try and do both. And, you know, it's a challenge, it depends how flexible people's jobs are, but we want to make it so everyone has the opportunity and we have, you know, as many different voices as possible. So I think that's something would be good, given you can't do it for yourself, to do before our next election and figure out how we get that done. So, you know, happy to work with the city clerk on sort of the process on that and coming up with some ideas on how we move that forward, if that's good. Removing barriers to serving. So we've maintained our current shared executive assistant, and one person trying to schedule us and do everything else is an overwhelming job, and I think there's more support with, with other positions now and with the new additional position. We'll sort of get a sense on how that's working, but we should really check in and make sure that's manageable as we, as we have now added another person to help on, on that. Shared legislative analyst. I find, at least with now having our current city attorney in the law firm, we're getting a lot more legislative analysis on a regular basis, so maybe continue that. I think we talked about feasibility of adding assistant for each council member, and I think the budget numbers, we decided to do some other things for right now. And so let's, unless anyone thinks differently, see how things go with this new position. Mayor Protem Holstidge?
Thank you. I agree. Though I do think that there's maybe some staff or commission council recommendations that might remove the barriers better. You know, I know the CVRA Working Group, these are great recommendations, but like, I'm hearing that the issue is that I get really concerned about waste because, one, constituents emailing five people, and then we're all forwarding it, and we're all responding, and it's just a mess. So I think that we could use, if there's staff recommendations, to use technology so that we streamline, you know, constituent or resident requests and responses, having Denise as the Office of Neighborhood Involvement answer some of those, you know, having a point person has been helpful. So thinking through, like, how do we use staff? Because I don't think that the residents of Palm Springs want us to be spending 20 hours a week responding to email. I mean, we are responsive, we set up meetings, I talk to people on the phone all the time, but when we're getting 100 emails about backyard breeding and we're expected to respond, and we're all doing it, I mean, it's just a huge waste of time. So, because it's duplicative times five. So I would be interested, I agree, we should just keep the staffing levels that we have here for this, but if there are other recommendations about using technology or the app, I know the city clerk, thank you, added how to submit public comment online and other ways to do that, so it doesn't fill our inboxes and we feel required to respond to each one. But yeah, what other staff support? Because I know our, our point person now is out for a month, so I'm not sure who to bother about resident requests. So getting some, like, real, you know, feedback there, staff recommendations, I think, would be helpful, because I think this is the main crux that you hear, is just how much time we're spending doing that kind of stuff, and not the really important work that I think people elected us to do, which is going to find $10 million and all that other work we do.
Yeah, so the, we have a, we're trying to put together a centralized with Denise
from the Office of Neighborhoods, because a lot of these are neighborhood-related, constituent-related. So, and Cindy has been an integral part of that. I don't think, and Cindy, please, comment here, it's, I don't think it's where we want it yet exactly. It's, it's sort of doing what we hoped, but it still seems to be a little bit fragmented because I think maybe we got to understand, because you still may want to respond to some things, or we may want her. And so Cindy, could you comment on the process currently as we have it?
Well, the, the process that we have currently, it definitely needs a little bit more work, a little more refining. It's hard to manage a number of emails that we get, and finding the best and the most appropriate way to kind of route those and to do all of the follow-up necessary, there's a lot of work involved there. I think we still need to figure out that from start to finish, but we're almost there. We seem to have a good flow going, but we do need to kind of get to that final point. But we're getting close to that, I think. So it's, it's much improved, and I think we just have a little bit more work to do on it.
Okay. All right, next. So car stipend allowance was discussed, or per diem. Mileage reimbursement, which I think is already a policy, although, yeah.
Well, it is, but again, that's a, it may be more of a process, too-process-oriented. My estimation of per diem, I mean, given, given what you required, a per diem, well, you certainly could use a city vehicle, that's probably not practical all the time, so a per diem or a monthly stipend would, would be appropriate, my estimation. Now, what we could do is we could ask the Compensation Commission that we're probably going to put together to take a look at that as well, or...
We drive so much for this job.
You do.
I've driven tens of thousands of miles, I've never been compensated one mile, so it's too, I don't have time to submit reimbursement. I'm responding to emails, so you, I think a mileage, I would like the Compensation Committee to consider that.
Yeah. And, you know...
And I don't know if that is even, if that would be outside of the compensation, if that's something that we would do administratively, and I'm just trying to think through this, where, where salary has to be for the next council, I don't know if this could be treated a little differently, because this is more of a urgent need, because they are doing...
This is different than salary, yes.
Yeah. So let me take a look at how I can accomplish that and come back with a recommendation administratively.
No, it's a good point. I look at the difference mileage on my car from before I was in this position and now, and it is, I mean, it's amazingly different.
We drive to Riverside and LA and Coachella, I mean, I think you had had a comparison, like, most of the cities do have some sort of car allowance. I remember seeing that. That would be interesting if, when you bring it back.
Okay, great. And then two items on childcare. So reimbursing childcare expenses and/or looking at the feasibility of having onsite childcare.
If I can.
Yeah, please.
The childcare issue, I think there's a lot of different ways to kind of discuss that.
No, hit it again. I just put it in discussion mode, so you could just, yeah, I didn't have it on. Yeah, just turn your mic on.
For childcare, I think there's a lot of ways to go about this, and I think the big thing, too, that we hear a lot from people in the community is just not being able to bring a child to city council meetings or feeling like they can't, I mean, obviously you can. If you have a child, you can bring your child to city council meetings. But I understand that, yes, if a baby's crying, it's, it's hard. It's, it's hard for everybody. So I think this was, I know, a larger issue of wanting to make sure that council members specifically had childcare access, but also that the community at large, when they're doing things with the city, also had access to childcare. One thing about this is, I brought this up at a forum with, that was held at the Methodist Church, and, and the reason that it got brought up is because the members of the Methodist Church said, "Where are the children?" They, they wanted, the pastor actually wanted to know, she was new to Palm Springs, she wanted to know where are the children in Palm Springs? She honestly never sees them. And I discussed that with her, and I also mentioned that there are people who want to participate and have children in hand, and she and so many of the members that were sitting there were like, "We're willing to help." We would co-to city council meetings and do a babysitting, you know, at, at city hall. They were just excited and willing to do it because they're largely retired members, and they have the time, and they miss having children around. So I think that there's things that maybe we can try with community support, and I know that there's some legalities with that as well, fingerprinting and all of that, but I would love to see us try something like that with a group of dedicated volunteers to just see how that goes. But the other thing about childcare, too, is that I think at commission meetings, a lot of times there's room to just have some books or toys in a corner with, that a child can play with quietly. I think there's a lot of kids that can play quietly by themselves, and, and someone that has a baby should feel free to take their baby with them, and if the baby cries, the baby cries. It's okay. That's, that's life, but we want those voices included. So I think part of this is, childcare, but part of this is also changing the culture and making people feel welcome with their children, even if that sometimes means that there's a disruption.
Anything else on that? Okay. Thank you. Increasing diversity on boards and commissions. I think we've talked about a lot of that, but I do think, you know, sort of, we didn't get into getting the data, so I don't know if things are happening on that front, City Clerk, and, you know, voluntary collecting data from folks and...
So I have not collected any of the data, because very specifically, I really do need some council direction or liaisons to tell me what demographic data you want collected.
Okay. Is that something the new ad hoc can work on, since you work on those issues? I think that makes sense. Councilmember Woods?
Are we under, you know, when I fill out a job application, as an example, that data is always given voluntarily. We would probably have to use that same type of method, I assume.
The data would have to be voluntary.
Yes. Folks want to just, so with that, we want to look over, is there anything people want to, like, pull out to discuss on the next slide, increase, sort of, this whole process? Because we talked about that a bunch, but the additional recommendations, if you want to just take a look at that.
I think we've done H, and I think F we talked about.
Yeah.
Which?
We've done E. We can discuss with it, yeah.
Here, I'm on my book. Page four. One that's on here that we've not talked about is developing a citizens' leadership academy. There are a number of cities that have taken and done that, so there's some good models out there, and it's something that I think would be very helpful and also helpful to our efforts of increasing the diversity by making it easier for folks who've not been traditionally asked to serve, to feel more, have more confidence that they're prepared and ready.
I agree, and I think the police currently are doing a really great job with their academy. It's, I know that a lot of people that have gone through it... It's, I know that a lot of people that have gone through it in English and in Spanish just get so much out of it and feel more connected to the police, but then also learn a lot that they didn't know. And I think doing something like that in City Hall would be incredible, and just provide so much more information.
Well, could I, so the police do have a very good model at that, but they do put considerable, you know, effort and staff time into it. I mean, I guess I just need to know what level of priority this is.
Yeah, I think this is something that will take time.
Okay.
If I can, one, one thing that's, people raise a lot is volunteer opportunities with the city, so I'm not quite sure what a citizens' or residents' leadership academy means, other than what's written here and what was in the report. But it's interesting, so we get a lot of people who apply for a board and commission as like their first touch to get involved in the city, and they're brand-new to the city, and they love it, and they love the city, and they want to be involved, and so they apply for a board and commission, and then they're often rejected because they just moved here like a month ago. And we frequently, you know, we're trying to get diversity, but we often prioritize people who've been here for a decent amount of time. So we were, and then when those people get not select, don't get selected, they just, like, go away, you know? So I know that it's a staff capacity issue, I understand, but just like thinking through long-term, we've had a lot of requests from commissioners to, you know, use volunteers in the city, or have people be able to serve on a subcommittee of a commission, or other ways to be involved in the city, because that's what I think we're missing, and I think we're losing out on a lot of talent and a lot of interest in the city, and then it creates problems for our boards and commissions, because it's like backlog, just that's the one opportunity to get involved. So I agree, this is a long-term process, I think that it's going to take time. I think we're dealing with staff capacity issues just for what we have, the boards and commissions. I didn't raise this before, but it would be nice, I know we probably won't get rid of any boards and commissions, but those are all 20 or 30 years old, other than Measure J. We have a lot, so it would be interesting to think about, like, what is the resources that's needed for Office of Neighborhood involvement? Like, what should that, like, the top-down look at, you know, how do we want to engage residents? Do we want them volunteering? You know, do we need an academy for that? I think there's a lot of options, and I've heard some really good ones from residents, but I don't think it's a top priority for now, based on the staff capacity issues that we have.
Anyone else?
You know, I think, since it is a long-term thing, the short-term thing could be what Councilmember Middleton just went to, is ensuring that our board and commission members know of symposiums that are coming up, or conferences that are coming up that they may want to attend, where they can get that type of training and knowledge, and can share with their counterparts and other parts of the nation, or even the, you know, the state, it's just important to keep them informed of things like that that's happening. I know that when I was on the Planning Commission, you know, APA would have conferences and things like that, but it was never really given to us as an option to go to this type of stuff, and I think it's important that the commissioners know about this type of stuff, that they could participate in, as the Sustainability Summit just was, which was here locally, which I think would be important for something like a Sustainability Commission. So that could be in lieu of, is just keeping people informed and appraised, like you would of staff, of things of that nature.
I'm curious, since we have some dedicated CVRA folks here, if there's anything that we didn't discuss that you wanted us, or hoping, rather, we would touch on.
There are just a couple of things that could be done. Directing the city clerk to file an annual report on diversity, identifying for them what parameters you want him to do, and possibly have him work with one of the commissions, like the Human Rights Commission. Giving the Human Rights Commission actual charges, I think they don't have enough, to be honest, and none of their charges go toward diverse, they don't go as far toward diversity as they could go. The, as you were talking about diversity, we talked about the focus group of prominent Latino, African-American, Asian, Filipino leaders. That might be one of the deliverables that you'll be talking about with consultants, of having them do that kind of work. But it's the, it's some of the increasing diversity on the boards and commissions, and a deliverable would be finding out, for example, on the Architectural Advisory Committee, we just had some interviews, it's an all-male, all-white committee, we had three absolutely lovely male, white male applicants. Helping recruit to change a little bit of those dynamics, people that applied were lovely, we picked an absolutely lovely person, but it would be good if there was more diversity in that. So I think some of the things that are in R7 might form some of the deliverables you want. If you're going to hire a consultant, those are the kinds of things you may be wanting them to do. And also, just in terms of the city clerk's report, Anthony is an absolute gem in the city, and involving him in this, I think would really, it was really a pleasure to work with him and the CVRA working group, and this is one job I'm sure he can do and would do well for you.
Thank you. I, I'm sorry it's late, I want to wrap up, but I, keep talking. I agree with you about the Human Rights Commission. I was really surprised to read, like, way too long of a scope, and really doesn't match with what they're actually doing, and so, in my opinion, and I served on the commission, a lot of it's about mediation and disputes, and we're currently doing none of that. So that's why I asked, you probably saw, which of the commissions have mission statements, and only a few do, so I think that, I think that point is right, you know, exactly right, that we should be giving this to a lot of the commissions. I think I had initially proposed that this, these recommendations go to the Human Rights Commission to do some of this, like, fleshing out and to save staff time. One last thing I'll say is that I think I had initially proposed hiring a diversity consultant, because I've worked with a number of large organizations, and a lot of my friends have worked in this field of diversity, equity, and inclusion for, since it began as an industry, and some of my friends have lead startups to do this work. So when I said a diversity consultant, I think what we got is outreach consultants, which is not quite the same as assessing where the city is, and like, the data and the practices of what we can do to improve diversity, equity, and inclusion. So when I was reacting kind of negatively to the outreach proposals we got, I think that's why, it's just a different thing. We need to do outreach, too, but these, you know, the survey of demographic markers, some of these policies, how we change the culture, that's the real substantive work that we need to do over time.
Great. Thank you. Anyone have anything else they want to say on this one? And with that...
I have one clarification request. The Architectural Advisory Committee is subordinate to the Planning Commission, so we don't actually recruit for that during our normal recruitment process. Would the council like me to start doing that?
Yes. Yes. I see the Planning Commission chair shaking her head forward, yes, as a nod, and I don't think she's sleeping, so that's a yes. Okay, thank you. So with that, the next item, I think, is public comment on non-agenda items. This time is set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on items of general interest within the subject-matted jurisdiction of the city, although the City Council values your comments, you all know us here, pursuant to the Brown Act, it generally cannot take any action on items not listed on the agenda. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. Do we have any public comments? Darrell, you want to speak? Please come join us. Come on down.
Hi, my name is Darrell Terrell from Reno Valley. The wage gap between men and women remains a durable problem. The persistent disparity in earnings from women, especially women of color, and single women with children, has a significant impact on their welfare and economic security, trapping many of them in poverty. Tonight, I would like to show you how we, as a city, can close that gap locally, and submitting to you a proposed equal pay ordinance when it comes to business, doing business with the city. This proposal, this proposed ordinance is meant to complement and ensure compliance with the State Equal Pay Act and Fair Pay Act. It will build upon and strengthen it by requiring that city contractors certify that it will provide equal pay to its workers regardless of their gender and ethnicity. Also, it will require them to post notices related to equal pay requirements, and to create and retain written records that document wage pay to employees, wage rates, and job classifications. The message is simple: equal pay for equal work. Time and time again, our community has demonstrated being leaders in civil rights and equal opportunity. Here we have another opportunity to reinforce that commitment by implementing an equal pay ordinance, and putting the city's purchasing power to work, power to work, to further equality for all through our contracting process. And I just want to enter this into the public record. And what I want to deal is, because at the federal level, it's kind of, it's, you know, the way things are, it's convoluted, or however you want to call it. But here, locally, you guys have led the way on a lot of things that has set the path for other cities to follow. And I say "we" because I think I'm party, this community, at some point, even though I drive from Reno Valley. But I come here because I feel that you guys have an opportunity. When it comes to equal pay, we could do it locally, in-house first, then spread it to businesses, that we could make sure that people of different race, ethnicity, especially women, get paid the same for the work they do. And I think that's a thing that we should push forward for, and that's why I came to present this ordinance, because I think other cities are doing this, and I think here in Palm Springs, we could do another, set another milestone in equality when it comes to pay on city contracts. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Public comment?
Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. The next item, city council and city manager requests and upcoming agenda development. I'm happy to sort of, just looking at the list a little bit, and also for the city manager, you know, we've held a number of meetings over the last week, reached out regarding coronavirus, but also influenza and impacts and potential impacts, including with Desert Regional, who has a plan in place, someone from the fire department who does infectious work, met with us on Wednesday with the GMs of many of the hotels and restaurants, talked about steps. So I think it would be good to present that at the next council meeting, sort of what is happening. The county hasn't declared a state of emergency, but, so we talked about that. We've also are looking into, and maybe by then we'll have just hand sanitizers in city buildings, the airport. There's been conversations with Visit California and the CVB, and our tourism partners as well, so there's been a lot going on, but I think it would be good to present where we are. There will be some meetings next week as well, because they're both, they're health issues, they're also economy issues, and I think it would be good just to take a chunk at the beginning of a meeting and make that a presentation upfront, and you and I can work on that together. Looking at the list, just for me, I mean, I think the bike share RFP is ripe to bring forward, we've met with-
Yeah, that's ready to come.
Right, so maybe that should move into the next meeting. Walker the Stars ordinance, they're really minor modifications, I've heard as liaison to the chamber, I've met with them, so it's probably just sitting down with the city attorney, there are two or three. For example, we got rid of a subcommittee which has a role, and things like that, but they're minor. But we also thought we should probably do a presentation on the first year from the chamber, which we could also do a short presentation, either at the next meeting or the one after that. The construction fencing ordinance, which has been on here for a long time, and I'm just thinking, given our planning director doesn't have a free second, maybe we can move that over to the city attorney, if that would work. But Flynn, I just want to-
We have an outline of a policy that I can forward to our city attorney and have him finalize that.
Okay, and I was on the ad hoc with former Councilman Roberts, so if you have the outline, I can just sit down with the city attorney and we can bring that forward. Just take that off your plate, because I know with a general plan update, you can't have a free minute already. So anyway, those were some things I just noticed. Are there other things people want for upcoming agenda discussion? Yes?
I know that we had talked about our Styrofoam and plastic waste ordinance, we had talked about bringing it as a study session with the larger climate action plan assessment and larger plans there. I'm getting really, really antsy about this Styrofoam, plastic waste. We're still eating a bunch of food in Styrofoam every day here in Palm Springs, it's been two years. It's been over a year since the students came and asked for this action. I know Councilmember Roberts was so excited to work on this with us, and he's come and gone, and I'm only guaranteed to be here until December. So please, I know that I'd given different direction, but can we bring this forward?
Mayor Portem, we're looking at the 19th, the next meeting for that, actually.
That would be amazing. I know the Sustainability Commission moved it forward.
I think Patrick is preparing, it was going to be the more global sustainability issue, he's preparing for the 19th.
That'd be great, so as soon as we know that, it's confirmed, that'd be great, so we can reach out to the students, and they can see government in action after their request. I think that would be really good.
Okay. And if that's an ordinance, we're also going to talk about the sustainability plan, maybe we can have that, since we've talked about it many times, sort of near the beginning, because the students can come, they can speak and then leave, or we do a study session starting at six and then go into the regular meetings. So just, if you can think about ways we can do that, and then not load up the agendas, so we're, I mean, so we're awake, we're doing that, too, because that's going to be an important issue, and there have been stakeholder meetings, I mean, a lot of work has gone into this. Yeah, so, and make sure we reach out to, you know, we've had Los Consoles Torazza actually tried all bunch of different sustainable takeout, and they do a lot of takeout, and, you know, can really report back to us as part of it, what worked, what didn't, costs. We have so much good information from people who in the community have done this. Pango Janies has done a lot with it, so we really should do that outreach and make sure they know about this early enough, so they can share their experience, because I think that'll help other businesses see what's really feasible and what works. Elmer Sol does that as well, so there has been a lot of work done in the business community, and I think that's really been helpful. So thank you. You're right, I wondered where that went. And just, folks know, we are changing our meeting schedule, so we were able to move our next meeting from the 12th to the 19th, and then we're going to do a study session on March 26th. But we should look at adding some more study sessions in those dates in here. I know we can't do that right now, but maybe, you know, if people can reach out, give us a date, maybe in April, or no later than early May for another, because if we put them a little more, we have one May 14th, so we get them scheduled and we can block the time. And the other thing we need to block time, and Councilmember Garner and I talked to him, we'll meet with you next week, is figuring out sort of goal-setting day as well. Is that it?
We've got the October...
Oh, yes, October 8th is a conflict due to League of Cities.
So we're fortunate in that October's one of those months with five Thursdays, so we actually do have some options, but the League of Cities Annual Conference is a very good one to attend, and...
So if we do the 15th and the 29th, the only issue from the city manager's point of view is we're going almost four weeks, the 17th of September to the 15th. Is that doable, or if there's-
So we would move the meeting on the 8th, is what you would say? We would just not have the meeting on the 8th, so our last meeting- So our last meeting would be September 24th?
No, September is the 17th.
Right.
We're doing the 1st and 3rd in September.
Right, right, okay.
Right?
Yes.
As we accommodated people's schedules, we set that, for me, that one. So I won't be here for the 24th. So if we're going to move the 8th, we can do the 15th and the 29th, if that works for everyone's calendars.
We can't do the 1st.
No, I won't be here. I can't do that.
So the 15th.
Yeah, or we could move it to, you know, October 6th and do it on a Tuesday that week, if that works for people.
Whatever works for staff.
October 6th conflicts with One PS that moved their meetings to evening two.
Okay. Or 5th. Well, I'm fine either way. I just want to make sure you're not worried about that long break with items that come through planning and other things that happen.
Well, that's far enough away. I mean, I think we can stipulate that we won't have the meeting on the 8th and-
So either 15th and 27th or some other time that week and the 22nd. And we'll bring that back at the next council meeting to make a final decision. When we're awake.
Great.
Yes.
Okay. So the next regularly, regular, regularly? Regular city council meeting will be held on Thursday, March 19th, 2020, at 6:00 PM, right here in the beautiful Palm Springs City Council chambers.
And Mr. Mayor, if we can, if we could adjourn this evening in the memory of Dallas Flechek, who was assistant city manager here for 23 years. Actually, from 1978 to 2001, he passed away a couple of years ago. Actually, he started here in 1966 in the finance department as the finance director. So he was here a long time. I had the pleasure to work with him for about a year and a half. And there was never a staff report better than what Dallas Flechek could do. So if we could adjourn in his memory and be appreciated by his family.
Thank you. Okay. We'll adjourn in his memory and thank you for that and sharing that, David.